Thank you councillors, Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance, we pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies?
Yes, yes, no.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Marks will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Marks be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes please.
Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I wish to advise councillor Griffiths will be absent, so move that he be granted a leave.
My apologies, I didn't see you standing. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Cook that councillor Griffiths be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,680th meeting held on Tuesday 24th of May 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,680th meeting, the council held on 24th May 2022, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, we have a public, or have public participants this morning, this afternoon, and I'd like to call on Dr Marian Hansen and Ms Vicky Henry, who are coming into the chamber now to address us on Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. Thank you. Billy, I'll show you to your chairs. I think we've set you up with a mic each, so. Thank you. Dr Hanson, Ms Henry, you have five minutes to commence once the mics are on and you're ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor Shriner, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you today about our request, the council to sign the city's appeal. My name is Maryanne, of course. I'm the co-chair of ICANN, which won the Nobel Peace Prize in 2017, by the way, and I'm also represented here today, the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom, with my colleague Vicky Henry. I have met some of you already and I hope to meet more of you in due course in order to provide any further context you might need. I've also left some leaflets which will provide more information for you. Unfortunately, we have a pressing problem in our world. There are still over 13,000 nuclear weapons in existence and many of these are hundreds of times more powerful than the Hiroshima bomb. We are closer now than we have ever been to a nuclear catastrophe. Numerous close calls and accidents have occurred where these weapons have very nearly been used. So you may well ask, well, what does this have to do with council, with local government? The problem is these weapons are targeted at cities like Brisbane and it is local councils which will have to address issues like burial, sanitation, hygiene, local storage, infrastructure, et cetera, in the unthinkable event of a nuclear strike or accident. Now, because of these responsibilities, councillors around the world have signed the city's appeal, which calls on all nine nuclear weapons states to eliminate their nuclear weapons. Not unilaterally, but as part of a mutual process in a phased, verified and fully monitored way. Over 400 cities worldwide, including New York, Paris, London, Berlin, and 39 LGAs across Australia, Sydney, Brisbane, Sydney, Melbourne, soon to be Brisbane, we hope, have signed up to the city's appeal. They have recognised that as with other weapons of mass destruction, like chemical weapons, biological weapons, nuclear weapons can also be eliminated. Now, we very much appreciate the fact that council has an existing anti-nuclear policy dating back to the early 80s, but there are three reasons why we believe this policy should be updated. First of all, the threat of nuclear war has actually grown since the 1980s and we only need to look at the war in Europe to understand the dangers here. Secondly, we now have much better scientific modelling than we had in the 1980s about the climate and social impacts of a nuclear strike and it shows a pretty grim picture of devastation. Even a small nuclear war would result in millions of deaths and create a nuclear winter affecting the whole world, where entire cities and ecosystems would be destroyed. Third, we have a brand new United Nations treaty which calls for the elimination of nuclear weapons. Let me stress that this is not a political or partisan issue, it is a humanitarian issue. In Australia, thousands of healthcare workers, the Australian Medical Association, Rotarians, religious organisations, the Red Cross, and as I say, hundreds of parliamentarians from all the major political parties have signed up to help eliminate these weapons of mass destruction. So it is a cross-party issue and even conservative leaders like Henry Kissinger in the United States, for example, have argued that for the sake of humanity, we must eliminate these weapons. And by the way, signing the city's appeal and the new UN treaty does not mean that we have to abandon the ANZUS alliance. Many US allies have already signed the treaty. We can remain within the ANZUS alliance if we wish, on a conventional weapons basis. So in sum, Brisbane council can demonstrate its commitment to protect the people of Brisbane by joining cities around the world which have already signed the city's appeal. Eliminating nuclear weapons helps us to build a better world, to focus on things that matter, like our families, our communities, our environment. And we saw, of course, in the local, the recent election, that these things matter very much to people.
Dr Henry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much for your attention.
And there will be a response. Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and good afternoon, Dr Hanson and Ms Henry. My name is councillor Tracey Davies and I'm the Civic Cabinet Chair for the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee here in council. And thank you very much for coming in today and addressing us about the work of your organisation. And can I acknowledge that it is the longest or the oldest women's peace organisation that I understand was established in 1915. And thank you very much for sharing your insights into the impacts of nuclear weaponry. We do recognise that concerted efforts are needed at all levels of government on the issue of nuclear weapons. And while the federal government has responsibility for signing the UN's treaty, as you mentioned, there are many cities and organisations that have, and campaigns that have come on board around the world to encourage world leaders to sign up, much like the organisation, of course, that you're representing here today. And while councillors previously backed our internal policy which outlines Brisbane being a nuclear-free zone as an example of our, of the matter, we understand the intent behind your campaign. That's why I'm very pleased today to advise that Brisbane City Council will join the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom and endorse the city's appeal that you have presented to us. Between council's internal policy and your city's appeal, we trust that these acts of symbolism will help other local governments across the country to support in your campaign. So thank you very much for coming in today and speaking with us.
Thank you councillor Davies.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in today. Appreciate it. Dr Hanson and Ms Henry, thank you. Mics are off. Councillors, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, at the last election, you promised Ashgrove residents that the Gresham Street Bridge would be completely replaced and rebuilt. Could you please update the chamber on the current status of this project, including how its delivery will service Ashgrove residents for decades to come?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, thank you to councillor Landers for the question. It was good to be out there this morning with councillor Toomey at the Gresham Street Bridge. This is an interesting one because what we saw with this project is the replacement of one of Brisbane's last remaining wooden road bridges with a better, more resilient, longer-lasting and more pedestrian-friendly structure. Now, the interesting thing about this is not just that it was replacing one of the older wooden bridges, but it illustrates that our business as usual is building things in a more resilient way. Now, this project started well before the recent floods and in fact, I think it was in April last year that we were out there kicking off this project. Today, or yesterday in fact, we saw the first use of the new bridge. There's still a little bit of work to be done out there to finalise the project, but the bridge is being used and the temporary bridge that was put in to facilitate the construction is now being dismantled. The new bridge provides the only access in and out of St John's Wood. So there is no other way in and out for around the 300 residents that live in that precinct. And what they were facing with the old wooden bridge is every couple of years, the bridge would be flooded and they would be trapped, either trapped inside the area or trapped out of the area, depending on whether they were at home or not at the time. So this new bridge builds the flood resilience of the area, not just the flood resilience of the infrastructure, but the flood resilience of that entire community. It's been a project that lifts the level of the bridge up over a metre, higher than the previous bridge, builds it in a much stronger and more flood-resilient manner, but also provides much better accessibility for pedestrians, cyclists and also buses as well. With the old bridge, buses could not turn left off the major thoroughfare there into that precinct, whereas now there is public transport access in all directions. So it's just one of many projects that we're doing across the city, but it just does illustrate, Mr Chair, that whatever we do these days, we're always bearing in mind resilience in our infrastructure and also building things stronger and building things with the long term in mind. This project was supported by the previous federal government with a contribution. Council did put in the lion's share of the funding, but we certainly welcome that federal support for this project. I want to thank the local councillor, Steve Toomey, who moonlights as the project manager. He has been out there at all hours of the day and sometimes the night, keeping an eye on progress. Our council's project manager has done a great job, but Steve is just making sure that on behalf of residents, everything has been going well. And so, congratulations to the project team, congratulations to councillor Toomey for championing this project. And as I said, this is one example of many where we're building infrastructure with an eye to the future, building it to be not only more resilient infrastructure, but helping our community become more resilient as well. And so I commend this project and it's great to see that milestone reached yesterday where we saw the first use of the very new bridge.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, over the last financial year, you allocated just $21.8 million to construct drainage infrastructure across 190 suburbs in Brisbane. Now, in comparison, you're spending $1.7 billion on your overseas Metro Bendy bus project. So that's 78 times the suburban drainage budget on a single inner-city busway extension. So, Lord Mayor, yes or no, do you think residents are getting value for money under your LMP administration?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. You better believe it. You better believe it because not only are we building the major infrastructure our city needs as it grows, we're also investing in the suburbs, in things like drainage, in footpaths, in all of those suburban projects. And in fact, over 80% of all our investment is in the suburbs. What we're seeing here, though, Mr Chair, is a very cynical attempt to confect, confect a political campaign in the lead-up to the budget, which is very reactionary, because I didn't hear councillor Cassidy talking about drainage last year. Did anyone? I don't remember him running a campaign on drainage last year. Councillor Cassidy. When we increased the budget by 10% last year, I didn't hear him saying anything about it then, or I don't remember. Does anyone else? No? I don't think so. He's a newfound convert into drainage in recent times. I don't know why. I don't know why. But this is what happens when you've got no agenda as a Labour Party leader. You just scratch around in the dirt for issues that, that literally you didn't care about before, you didn't care about before and suddenly, and suddenly you're a convert to drainage. Well, he wasn't, he wasn't speaking up when we increased the budget by 10% last year. And I can say, councillor Cassidy, I can say councillor Cassidy, you are going to be very pleased when the next budget comes out. In fact, in fact, I look forward to his celebration when the next budget comes out. Does anyone predict whether that will happen or he'll complain? I don't know. I don't know. Some would say that no matter what we do in the budget, he'll complain, but that's a very cynical view. Look, I think he'll be very happy. I think he will be very happy because we will continue to invest in the suburbs, we will continue to invest in much-needed infrastructure right across the city and whether it's drainage, whether it's the flood recovery work that needs to be done, whether it is footpaths and road maintenance, whether it is all of those important things that need to be done as we recover as a city, we will be focusing on that absolutely. Drainage will be one part of that. But as I've said previously, that is not the silver bullet. There are so many other things that can contribute to more flood, a more flood-resilient city, other than drainage. And it is important that we as civic leaders do not sell snake oil to people by, by making them think that, you know, some extra funding for drainage will solve every problem. It won't. It won't. It needs to be a multi-pronged response and that is exactly what we are doing and exactly what we will continue to do. Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shriner Council's award-winning Brisbane Metro project continues to reach new milestones. With the recent arrival of the Metro Pilot Vehicle in Brisbane, could you please update the chamber on the features of this vehicle, including an update on the wider Metro project?
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you very much, Chair, and thanks to councillor Huang for the question. It's great to have councillor Huang back and he has been a tremendous supporter of Brisbane Metro over a very, very long time. Chair, I'll continue. Chairs, part of the Brisbane Metro residents in our city will be the first in Australia to experience one of the most advanced electric vehicles in the world when services begin in 2024. In 2019, we started one of Brisbane Metro's most important components, designing and delivering a vehicle that is truly world-class for our customers.
Councillor Huang.
The end result is what we have here today, the Hess Light Tram 25, a vehicle with the highest standards of passenger access, comfort, safety and zero tailpipe emissions. This vehicle is in itself an Australian first. It's capable of quietly and efficiently and cleanly moving large numbers of people in a type of comfort and accessibility that has not been seen before in our country. Across three passenger compartments, the Metro can hold 150 people or 170 in event mode. There are 64 seats, 10 of which are priority seating, as well as three large mobility bays complete with luggage storage. The low-floor design and panoramic windows mean the vehicle feels light and spacious with powerful air conditioning that will keep us cool even in Brisbane's humid summers, although you may not feel it today, Chair. The next stop announcements and passenger information screens will make sure you always know when your stop is coming up and wifi and USB charging hubs will keep you connected while you travel. Every compartment has audio and hearing loops and there is an automated accessibility ramp at the first passenger door. I know the Labour Party love to laugh about the accessibility features on this vehicle, Chair, but the reality is for those who live with a disability, these are really important features that will make a difference in their ability to access public transport around our city. And we do not have these type of features on the rest of our fleet at present. Our drivers also get an upgrade chair, a separated driver cabin with next-generation driver-assistive technologies to make sure our drivers can focus on the task at hand, getting our passengers from A to B. Mr Chair, these features have set the new standard for passenger safety, comfort and accessibility in Australia, but it's not just pretty inside, it's also powerful. There are two fully-electric 190-kilowatt traction motors generating 2,500 nanometres of torque, delivering better performance than an equivalent diesel engine with just a fraction of the noise. In fact, Chair, you will know as we had a conversation outside a Metro that was running the other day with all of its air conditioning turned on. The top of the vehicle is fitted with a charging arm, what we call a pantograph, which allows for the flash charge of the vehicle in under six minutes at four key locations across the network. At the end of a shift, the Metros will be slow-charged at the depot to maximise the lifespan of the battery and optimise energy consumption. The vehicle has been in testing since it arrived last month and we're putting it through its paces to ensure it meets all of our requirements before we then place the order for the rest of the fleet. As I mentioned, our Metros are based on a proven product, the Hess Light Tram 25, but we want to make sure that it performs here in Brisbane conditions. There are no conditions more trying for a public transport vehicle than conditions here in Brisbane. This vehicle has to pass just over 750 tests made up of over 1,300 individual technical requirements. Over half those tests were passed before the pilot vehicle even arrived in Brisbane, but we'll be evaluating this vehicle's manoeuvrability, functionality, accessibility, its energy consumption and its onboard systems as we go. On the busway, we want to test the range of the vehicle's charge, the speed and compatibility with our station platforms. It will also be visiting the RACQ's Mobility Centre at Mount Cotton for performance and evaluation testing and we'll be going up Mount Coother for gradient testing, otherwise known as the hill climb. Residents may get a glimpse of the vehicle in testing mode when it travels on the Gateway Motorway, the Pacific Motorway, the South-East and Northern Busways, as well as some local roads. Mr Chair, another part of what makes Brisbane Metro such an exciting project is the way our vehicles will integrate into the city's existing infrastructure. Thanks to the vehicle design, we've been able to deliver a fully-electric, high-capacity vehicle without the need to install costly and intrusive overhead wires or tracks. It's a system that has the capacity, the capacity of light rail with the flexibility of a bus. The flexibility and manoeuvrability not being tied to track infrastructure means it can be easily adapted to different transport routes, making it a lot easier to expand the metro network into the future. It's one of the most cost-effective solutions for improving public transport and reaching our sustainability goals. Our busway network in Brisbane means that we can seamlessly deliver a turn-up-and-go service from Eight Mile Plains in the south to Hurston in the north.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, recently the Morton Bay Mayor took responsi-- I'll start again. Recently, the Morton Bay Mayor took responsibility and informed his residents that rates will be going up in their upcoming council budget. He wanted to give residents as much time as possible to prepare their own finances. Despite repeated questions from reporters, residents and councillors, you have refused to do the same for the people of Brisbane. Lord Mayor, will you be increasing rates in the upcoming council budget and if so, by how much?
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Well, Mr Chair, councillor Cook obviously comes to this place and doesn't listen one bit, because this question has been asked before and been answered. And, look, I don't know what she does in these meetings, but is certainly not listening to answers that are given, because as I pointed out the last time this question was asked, the budget has not been completed yet and that process is ongoing. And when it is completed, it will be released publicly in the ordinary way. Now, I'm sure councillor Cook would love to assist me in preparing the budget, but that is not the role that she has. And so councillor Cook will find out, the same way that all councillors will find out, once the budget is complete. But what I can say is, when Labour councillors criticise us for putting projects on pause so that we can focus on the flood recovery, what does that do? If we actually took their advice, it would mean more upward pressure on rates. If we continued to do projects that they have criticised us for pausing, that would put upward pressure on rates. But what I can promise, Mr Chair, to councillor Cook is we will never raise rates as much as the Labour Party did when they were in office in City Hall. We will never raise rates as much as they did when they raised rates by 6% on four different occasions. Now, councillor Cumming mentions inflation. He interjected last week on inflation. We have seen the highest inflation that we've seen in decades now across Australia and we see the national inflation rate of 5.1 and I understand the Brisbane inflation rate is 6%. 6%. But I can tell, I can tell all of you, we won't be raising rates by 6% like Labour did. Even if inflation is 6%, we won't be doing it. So please rest assured, rates will be lower than the Brisbane inflation rate and you will find out in a couple of weeks' time what that outcome will be. But we will never raise rates by 6% like Labour did repeatedly.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, with the dust of the federal election now settling, can you please update the chamber on election commitments that were promised by the incoming government?
Thank you, councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and through you, thanks to councillor Atwood for the question. As the Lord Mayor said last week, the Shriner Council congratulates Prime Minister Anthony Albanese and his team on their election and we look forward to continuing to have a positive relationship with the federal government. The local roads and community infrastructure programme introduced by the former government was hugely successful, with over $75 million in funding provided to 74 projects in Brisbane across three phases. These projects have supported our economic recovery during the pandemic and they continue to support us as we recover from the floods. The Coalition announced a two-year, $500 million extension in the budget, which will take the total size of this programme to $3 billion. We were pleased to receive confirmation during the campaign that Labour will also honour this commitment and allow for a further $250 million extension. Local government is the level of government which is closest to the people, so we appreciate this commitment from Canberra to working with councils right across Australia, but especially here in Queensland, to deliver projects which create better communities. We will ensure that Brisbane continues to get its fair share from the LRCI programme, Mr Chair. Prior to the election, the former federal government also confirmed funding towards two flood-affected clubs. As councillor Atwood, you would be aware, Ross Vasta secured $4 million for clubs at Carmichael Park in Tungalpa and also in My Ward, $900,000 was secured for East Football Club at Heath Park in East Brisbane. We trust that these commitments, which the federal government wrote to council to confirm prior to caretaker period, will be honoured by the Albanese government. There were a number of other commitments made right across Brisbane by Labour MPs and Labour candidates during the election campaign to support clubs on council land, including flood-affected clubs. We look forward to these projects being funded and rolled out in the coming years to support community clubs in suburbs across Brisbane. For example, $2 million was committed for Souths at Davies Park in West End to work with council to plan the future for this valued green space. Councillor Cassidy would, I'm sure, welcome the $5 million commitment made to upgrade the Brighton foreshore. The Lord Mayor has committed to delivering consultation and the concept plan this term and the funding from the federal government will ensure that upgrades can be delivered after that. In Sunnybank, $2 million was committed to accessibility upgrades. In Sunnybank, $2 million was committed to accessibility upgrades for the Mainz Road pedestrian overpass. At Tuie Forest, $400,000 was committed to continue council's investments in wildlife movement solutions across the city with funding for a fauna crossing. As Shadow Environment Minister, Terry Butler developed an urban rivers encatchments policy. I'd like to think she was inspired by the work done by the Shrinna Council in delivering the Ossley Creek and Norman Creek master plans, and in particular, the transformation that has occurred at Hanlon Park in Stone's Corner. The $200 million programme will see funding provided to community groups, local and state governments, to restore local waterways and habitats and create valuable recreational space in the process. There were funding commitments made across Brisbane for a number of council-supported creek catchment groups. There was also $2.5 million commitment to a project to renaturalise Downfall Creek. On major transport projects, we look forward to continuing work with the federal government on the delivery of the Brisbane Metro and also on our city deal projects. So, Mr. Chair, there are a number of projects that have been committed to in Brisbane, and we look forward to continuing our strong relations with the federal government, because we know that when different levels of government work together, we can achieve much for the community, and that is the approach of the Shrinna Council.
Thank you. Further questions? councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the mayor, following on from that last discussion about rate rises. I wonder if the mayor could express an opinion or comment on the value of potentially increasing rates for other categories of properties, such as commercial properties or industrial properties, so that we don't have to increase rates for owner-occupy homes by as much or at all? Do you think there is a good argument for increasing rates on those other investment style of properties so that rates for residents can be kept lower?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor Sri. Look, that is something that has happened from time to time. We know that our residential rates in Brisbane are actually amongst the lowest in South East Queensland already, and the reason is because we have this economic hub right here, the CBD, those booming inner-city areas which are commercial, and they're contributing to help keep residential rates down. So that is already the case at the moment. If you go to the surrounding council areas and you ask for their average residential rate bill, you will find it is already significantly higher than the Brisbane rate bill. And so this factor that councillor Sri refers to is a real one, and the fact that we, the economic and jobs hub of the South East Queensland region means that our rates for residents are lower. And so that is something that, you know, is a consideration in any budget, and you've pointed out something that is quite legitimate. And it's a good reminder that, you know, the economic activity and the boom that is happening here in Brisbane does have benefits for residents out in the suburbs, because when economic activity does well in those inner-city areas, it means that residents pay less than their comparative council areas in other parts of Brisbane, in other parts of South East Queensland, that is. And so, yeah, it would be an interesting comparison to do, to have a look at those average rate bills in other surrounding SEQ councils, because without, maybe we should do that, councillor Murphy, but you have raised a good point, councillor Sri. And thank you again for, you know, coming to this...
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Sri.
Sorry. Just to the nub of the question, you've talked around it, but will you actually consider raising rates for those other classes of properties to offset the costs of resident rates?
Well, rates for those other categories are already significantly higher. The categories are bringing significant more revenue, the rating categories are significantly higher for other types of uses in the city. We have always consistently tried to keep those residential rates as low as possible, and the way that that happens is by capturing some of that economic activity that happens around the city to help keep rates down for everyone else.
Thank you. Further questions? councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to the Chair of Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, this week is National Reconciliation Week. Right across the country, communities are celebrating and remembering this week to learn about our shared stories, cultures and achievements. Could you please update the chamber on how the Shrinna Council is celebrating National Reconciliation Week here in Brisbane?
Thank you. councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Hutton for her interest in how council supports and enables the events across the city as they promote and acknowledge National Reconciliation Week. Every year, National Reconciliation Week runs from the 27th of May to the 3rd of June, both of which being significant milestones in the reconciliation journey, the date of the successful 1967 referendum and the 1992 High Court Mabo decision, respectively. In between these two significant dates, National Reconciliation Week is a time for all Australians to learn about our shared histories, cultures and achievements, and to explore how each of us can contribute to achieving reconciliation in Australia. Each year, the theme of every Reconciliation Week is different, with this year's theme being Be Brave, Make Change. This year's theme is a challenge to us all to be brave and tackle the unfinished business of reconciliation so we can continue to make change for all, as we reflect on our past and strive for a better future for all Australians. This year, a number of activations have been scheduled, not only throughout National Reconciliation Week, but also for National Sorry Day, which takes place every year on the 26th of May. On Thursday last week, I accompanied the Lord Mayor to council's ceremony to observe National Sorry Day in King George Square, followed by a candle-lighting ceremony in recognition of the children, families and communities affected by the forced separation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children. Across the city, council's Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander team also worked with community organisations to support a number of ceremonies across Brisbane, giving residents the opportunity to reflect upon and commemorate National Sorry Day. The Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Redcliffe Place sculptures were also lit red, black and yellow to commemorate National Sorry Day on the 26th of May. And again, on the 29th of May, assets across the city were lit up in the colours of red, black, yellow, blue and green in recognition of National Reconciliation Week. At our libraries, council has continued to deliver programmes such as our first Five Forever Jar Jam Storytime programmes and our Reading for Reconciliation programme. Having first commenced in October 2021, our first Five Forever Jar Jam stories are held monthly at the Brackenridge, Brisbane Square, Sunnybank Hills and Wyndham libraries. These sessions recognise Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander cultures as our first Australian cultures and work to build awareness of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander culture, perspectives, stories, authors and illustrators. Through our Reading Through Reconciliation programme, we encourage our residents to improve their knowledge and understanding of the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander issues and histories. The Reading Through Reconciliation group seeks to assist members of the community to start a reconciliation journey through reading and discussing selected texts in an informal and friendly setting. In addition, I'd like to take this opportunity to update the chamber on this year's Indigenous Art Programme, Outstanding, which will be displayed throughout Brisbane's Outdoor Art Gallery until the 7th of August. Outstanding is shining a spotlight on promising, emerging and early-career First Nations artists through artworks, artist talks, open studios, workshops and guided talks taking place across the city. To learn more about the art and artists on display across Brisbane, we are encouraging residents to join one of the many walking tours taking place to learn about the artworks on display across the city. Council's Indigenous Art Programme has run annually since 2016 and has exhibited more than 80 First Nations artists and their unique stories and is a programme that we are very proud to support. Council recognises that reconciliation must live in the hearts, minds and actions of all Australians as we move forward, creating a nation strengthened by respectful relationships between the wider Australian community and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples. As part of this process, members of our Inclusive Communities team recently met with 40 residents, elders and custodians who provided comprehensive feedback to council and our Reconciliation Action Plan. And I'm happy to update the chamber here today to say that we have incorporated that valued feedback council received as part of this process, and our Reconciliation Action Plan has been provided to Reconciliation Australia for review and endorsement. It is through awareness, events and practices like these, including the continued work on our Reconciliation Action Plan, that we can walk together on this continued journey towards reconciliation. We have so much to be proud of as a city and as Australians, and our Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander heritage is something that the Shrinna Council will continue to celebrate, strengthen and support for years to come.
Thank you. councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. My question's to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, just days before the federal election, you took out the trash using the floods as an excuse to cut a number of suburban projects that you once championed, including the Inogres Creek Sport and Recreation Precinct and the North Brisbane Bike Way. Before you announced this publicly, the former LMP member for Brisbane, Trevor Evans, was sending letters to residents claiming these projects being cut as a win, saying his influence over your LMP administration forced you to reconsider these projects. Lord Mayor, did you cut these projects to give your LMP mate a helping hand in the dying moments of his campaign?
Lord Mayor.
If councillor Cassidy thinks that a bike way had anything to do with the federal election result, he's barking up the wrong tree there. I don't think the North Brisbane Bike Way had any influence whatsoever on the federal election result. It was definitely other issues at play there, but I'll tell you what did have an influence on the bike way, and that is the fact that we have to spend $50 million fixing existing bike ways before we can build new bike ways. And that's exactly what we'd be doing, because making sure that that existing connectivity can be re-established is absolutely critical. And the $50 million investment that's estimated at this point in time is a big one. That's a significant one, and it's one that we want to get on with. And so that is right now our priority. But when it comes to bike ways, we have an absolutely proud record right across the city of investing in bike ways, investing in shared infrastructure, separated infrastructure and a whole range of other facilities that make our city more sustainable and easier to get around, and we will continue to do so in the future. And in fact, you will not find another administration in the history of Brisbane City Council that has invested more in public and active transport than this one. And even with some temporary pauses on various projects, we'll still be investing more than anyone has ever done in the past. Now, there are some people who would like to make this about, oh, you support motorists and you don't support cyclists. Well, that is just a rubbish argument. That is an argument of people who would prefer to divide than unite, and that is an argument of people who quite clearly hate motorists. I mean, that is not a productive way to look at a debate like this. We've been consistent the whole time investing in all the different modes of travel, not just one, all of them. And we know that there are some that would have us stop investing in roads altogether. And in fact, even some councillors that think that if we have a road that floods from time to time, it should be closed down, we're not going to do that. We're not going to do that, because roads are an important way to get around the city just as active travel and pedestrian and cyclist facilities are, and we'll continue to invest right across the spectrum. We, unfortunately, unlike the Greens, I can tell you, we do not hate motorists. We don't hate cyclists. We don't hate pedestrians. We love everyone. We love everyone. The only policy agenda that has hatred in it is the Greens' agenda, where they hate motorists with a passion, they want to punish motorists, and I can say...
Point of order, Chair. Point of order to you, councillor Sri.
Just wondering if the mayor could take a question about his mobile phone ringtone?
That's not an appropriate point of order. But, Lord Mayor, you heard the question.
So, yeah, that wasn't my ringtone. So we will continue to invest right across the different modes of travel, because we believe that making sure people have options is the critical thing. And, you know, we know, for example, that all of those people on the weekend that had just gone past that voted Green, they didn't vote Green because they hated motorists. And in fact, a large percentage of them are motorists. They voted Green for other reasons, and they, I think, would object strongly if they discovered that the Greens wanted to punish motorists and hated motorists. And so, look, we are simply saying that you need a sensible, balanced approach here, and not one based on hatred of a particular group of travellers because of the mode of travel that they use. So we will continue to invest in bike ways and active travel. We will fix roads that have been damaged rather than closing them down. And, look, the Labor Party are snickering here, and I'm not sure why they're snickering, because I remember that you lost a seat on the weekend as well, and so I wouldn't be so smug if I was you. I wouldn't be so smug, particularly councillor Cook, because the Greens are coming after you. They have got you in their sights, and they've got you in their sights. Councillor Sri's mate is coming after you.
Councillor's order, please. Order.
So, look, you know, the weekend result is not a reason for anyone to be smug, but to make sure that we're investing in sensible policies that support a balanced approach right across the city, and that balance needs to be across all areas, and whether it's active travel and transport modes, or whether it's practical support for environmental initiatives as we've continued to do.
Your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Mackay.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, on Sunday, the ever-popular Green Heart Fair was held in Victoria Park, which is also known as Baramburn. Could you please update the chamber on how this event went, including how events like this are keeping Brisbane clean, green and sustainable?
Thank you. councillor Davis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Mackay for the question. It was great to see you, councillor Mackay, with your family on what was a glorious day in Brisbane, at Victoria Park, Baramburn, for residents to come together and learn more about sustainable living. Mr. Chair, the Green Heart Fair was officially opened by our Lord Mayor, and it was wonderful to have Auntie Teresa Williams give the Welcome to Country. Auntie Teresa has a very special connection to Victoria Park, Baramburn, and shared her story of when 60 years ago, as a child, she and her mother actually lived on the site. And Auntie Teresa also spoke about our future generations, so it was fantastic to see so many families and young children at the event. 2022 actually marks the 14th year since the start of Green Heart Fairs, and this year's event was our biggest year, featuring 120 of Brisbane's leading sustainability experts who were ready to share with their tips and tricks on how to live a more sustainable and eco-friendly life. Over at the Green Home Living Zone, workshops were held on how to stop using plastics and how to renovate a Queenslander for energy efficiency. There were sessions on making sugar-free jam and DIY furniture using reclaimed timber. There were also workshops about setting up community gardens, helping bees thrive in your backyard and so much more. There was also a session at the Green Home Living Zone where I had the opportunity to meet some of the champion households who had participated in the Carbon Challenge and to hand out their certificates of completion, and it was fantastic to see so many people engaged in reducing their carbon footprint at home. And I look forward to seeing more people undertake those opportunities to reduce their footprint, starting by taking the carbon calculator to see where their start point is. There was also a whole zone dedicated to resilient homes. This area included our own Flood Hub, which is a mini resilient home, as you know, Chair, that showcases flood-resilient design, as well as stalls from our Talk to a Planet team, the SES Rural Fire Service and Evolved Construction. Next door at the Eco Kids Zone, where there were a range of activities for the children to enjoy that focused on sustainability, including a workshop on nature play weaving, Little Green Thumbs colourful mines, painting programme and kite making. It was wonderful to see all the kids, once they'd made their kites running up and down the hills there at Vic Park. But of course, the main act for the kid were performances by Dirt Girl and Scrap Boy, which got them all dancing and learning about sustainable living. At the event, we also had our first Junior Ranger Quest, which was inspired by the Junior Ranger Programme at Warral Parklands, and more than 300 youngsters undertook the quest and on completion received their Junior Ranger Pack. Ranger pack, complete with badge and either a BSWAC wrap or reusable sandwich wrap. There was also mini putt-putt giant games and mini soccer run by the little kickers, so plenty of things to keep the kids active and engaged. Mr. Chair, the Green Heart Fair is committed to being a zero-waste and has adopted a number of sustainable initiatives to reduce waste and contribute to a clean and green Brisbane, including a mug library where visitors at the fair could borrow a reusable coffee mug. Visitors who brought along their own reusable coffee mug received discounts for coffee at the fair. The Green Heart Fair was also free of single-use plastics with no plastic bags, straws or balloons, as well as no sale of single-use plastic bottles, with visitors encouraged to bring their own bottles and fill up using the various refill stations on the site. As the chamber is aware, council is transforming Victoria Park, Baramburn into a world-class destination to become a natural retreat and an urban park for adventure, discovery and reconnection. And at the beginning of this transformation, should I say, was definitely on show this weekend. And it was great to be able to see so many people wandering through the parklands, enjoying the views and the space that is on offer. And seeing so many people stand under the Victoria Park, Baramburn arch with the city skyline in the background, doing their Instagram moments, was fantastic to see. We predict that there will be between 15,000 and 20,000 people that attended on Sunday, so that's exciting. And the Victoria Park, Baramburn team are also on-site to talk about the early projects that we will be having at the park, including the urban pump track and Spring Hill Common.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, sorry. Point of order.
You're point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, just a procedural matter with respect to the agenda. With respect to the answers to the question on notice, the answer at question five says that there's material provided to councillors due to commercial incompetence, but we don't have a separate piece of paper with those answers, which is normally how that info is provided. Could you please provide that to us?
Okay, I'll follow through on that question. Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Cassidy, your question.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to Lord Mayor. Recently, in contracts coming to council, we saw more than $63 million being spent on recruitment for temporary labour hire. That's $63 million promoting insecure work here in council. That $63 million could be used to create secure, permanent in-house council jobs and even bolster council's own HR team to ensure that works. Brisbane workers have families to feed, but you'd rather keep them wondering where their next pay cheque is coming from, Lord Mayor. Why do you continue to do this?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy is so red-hot on this issue that he still has to read his question out. Like, it's just, this is the same rubbish that he has raised again and again, and it is just, like, misleading in the extreme. The only, I guess, people at the forefront of outsourcing in this place have been the Australian Labour Party. When they outsourced the collection of rubbish, and they outsourced the grass-cutting, and they outsourced the operation of CityCat ferries. All of those things were outsourced under Labor, and now they would have you believe that they suddenly don't support this approach. Of course they do. Of course they do. But what we see here is that Labor seems to see workers in two classes. And to Labor, the only important workers are the unionised permanent workers. They're the only ones that Labor cares about. Why? Because unionised permanent workers pay their fees to the union, which then goes to the Labor Party campaign. That's why they care about unionised workers, because that's how they fund their campaigns. That's where they get all their support from. And they don't care about other kinds of workers. They don't care about workers in local businesses that get contracts with council. They do not care about social enterprises like Malthana, who clean our buses for us and do a fantastic job. They don't. They only care about unionised workers. Now, we care about all workers, which is why we ensure that there are ample opportunities for local businesses to do work for council. Because we don't see those workers in two classes. We see them all as equal, and they all deserve a go when it comes to supporting local business.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, the Lord Mayor has been ranting and raving for the last minute or two now about contracts and small businesses and social enterprises. My question was about $63 million worth of temporary labour hire contracts, which is a very different issue, and he clearly doesn't understand what his LMP administration is doing in creating two classes of workers here in council. Can he answer that question?
Can't debate the question. Councillor Cassidy, but Lord Mayor. Order, please, all sides.
As I was saying, we don't believe there are two classes of workers. We don't believe that people...
Councillor Cassidy, please.
We don't believe that people that do some short-time work for council are any less important than those permanent employees. Councillor Cassidy does, and he's made it very clear that he sees them as less than. He sees them as lesser workers. He sees those jobs as less important. We do not. We see them as just as important, because they contribute just as much to the city as other kinds of workers. And so...
Councillor Cassidy.
What we're seeing here is we diversify the amount of work that has to be done across the city between those short-term projects, work that is done on a short-term basis, and then other kinds of work, but we also look at value for money as well. And if it is providing good value for money to go with a local business or a local recruitment company to engage services, then we should absolutely consider that. I was talking to one of my other mayoral colleagues from South East Queensland, who was saying, oh, yeah, I heard your leader of the opposition, what's his name, banging on about outsourcing the work. He's like, that's the only way we do it. Why? Because when you outsource it, you get what you pay for, and you can monitor it. And if you don't like it, you can go with someone else. And so that was not my quote here. That was another mayor of South East Queensland who was actually saying it was a good thing to do.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, the question was about temporary labour hire workers, not about contracting out. The Lord Mayor is either confused or deliberately not answering the question. Can you draw him back to that?
Lord Mayor.
Well, what was the question? I mean, was there a question? I heard a speech. I heard some commentary, but I didn't actually hear a question.
Councillor Cassidy.
The question was, why do you continue to create two classes of workers in Brisbane City Council in continuing this trend of putting labour hire workers alongside permanent employees?
Councillor Cassidy, the time for question time has expired. Thank you. And, Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report, please, 23 May.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 23rd of May, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 23 May, 2022, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
And councillor Cassidy, following on from that question, he was asking why we do that? Because it's the best outcome for the ratepayers of Brisbane. That's why. That's why we do it, because we can provide better services to the ratepayers of Brisbane. That's why we do it, because there is no administration that has invested more in boosting and improving services that the residents of Brisbane get than we have. And so that's why we do it. That's why we do it this way. This week, we'll see, once again, our assets lit up to support some important causes. And last night, we had the Sandgate Town Hall, Reddick Cliff Place, Brisbane City Hall, lit up in red for World MS Day. And for more than 60 years, MS Queensland has provided care and support to Queenslanders living with MS and other neurological conditions. Every year, on the 30th of May, MS Day is celebrated globally. And tonight, Reddick Cliff Place, the Tropical Dome, Victoria Bridge and Story Bridge will be lit up in purple to support Darkness to Daylight. Darkness to Daylight is a 110-kilometre overnight event that will help raise awareness of domestic and family violence as DV Prevention Month comes to an end. On Wednesday, we'll be lighting up our assets again for National Reconciliation Week. Bridges will be lit up in black, red and yellow, blue, green and white to commemorate this week, which is something that we've previously lit up as well on other days. On Thursday night, we'll be lighting up the Story Bridge in green and white and red to celebrate Italy's National Day. Every year, on the 2nd of June, Italy celebrates its National Day, and we're supporting our local Italian community in their festivities for this important day. On Thursday night, we'll also be lighting up the Reddick Cliff Place, Victoria Bridge and the Tropical Dome in purple to celebrate the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. This year, Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth, will become the first Australian monarch to celebrate a Platinum Jubilee after 70 years of service. A truly remarkable length of service, and if you just consider all of the things that have happened in the last 70 years, it's been a time of incredible change. And to be in that role for 70 years is a truly remarkable thing, and I do think Her Majesty is a truly remarkable lady. This Friday is Marbo Day, and we'll be lighting up our assets in blue, green and white to celebrate the occasion. The decision of the High Court, the famous Marbo decision, was on the 3rd of June, 1992. And this decision, as we all know, paved the way for native title to make its way into Australian law. On Saturday night, we'll be lighting up the Story Bridge red to support World Hemochromatosis Week. This disease is a result of an overload of iron and is purely genetic. It's the most common genetic disorder in Australia and affects 1 in 200 Australians. On Sunday, the Story Bridge will be lit up blue to celebrate the Brisbane Marathon Festival. This is the 30th anniversary of the festival, and the organisers expect around 8,000 runners to sign up to this event. It's something that we're supporting through the Brisbane Economic Development Agency, and all funds raised go to Ronald McDonald House. It's great to be out at Victoria Park, Baramburn, on the weekend for the Green Heart Fair. And it was, you know, it was a wonderful event, but what was even more wonderful were those people who came out and said, oh, you've suddenly turned green after the federal election. Well, hello, we've been doing this for 14 years. 14 years. And in fact, before the first Green councillor was ever elected to Brisbane City Council, we were green. And we've been running this wonderful Green Heart Fair across the suburbs of Brisbane for well over a decade. Why? Because we believe in it. We believe in practical environmental action, and the community believes in it too. And it was great to see so many people out there, not only enjoying the Green Heart Fair, but also exploring Victoria Park, Baramburn. For many people who don't play golf, this is the first time that they've had a chance to go in and walk the grounds of Victoria Park, Baramburn. And it is a truly special place. It is an amazing place. And, you know, the golfers obviously had run of it for a period of years, but now everyone in the community has access to this wonderful green space. And we're looking forward to working with the community to roll out the master plan later on this year, and then start the initial upgrades as we head towards the 2032 Olympics. I also just wanted to mention the significance of the unveiling of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander War Memorial in Anzac Square. This is something that was long overdue, and it is in fact going to be, I understand, the last memorial of its kind in Anzac Square. And I think it is fitting that it is the last, because when you think about all those Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders that served our nation, a nation that, for a large period of time, didn't give them basic rights, yet they volunteered, and sometimes they actually volunteered by really not fessing up about their cultural background. To serve this nation and potentially die for this nation is incredible. It is an incredible thing. And as I said during the week, the service of Indigenous or Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders in our military, I believe, was the start of a national conversation about Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander rights. And, you know, people rightly ask, if they can fight and die for our country, why don't they have basic rights? And so that started a long process, but I think, how can you argue with that question? How can you argue with it? So it is right that there is now a permanent Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander War Memorial in Anzac Square, and that will be there for the generations. And just adds even more significance to what is an amazing sacred place in our city. And I want to thank everyone that's been involved in putting that memorial together over a long period of time. We're obviously one of the contributors financially to that memorial, along with the state government and others, and it is just a wonderful thing. The items in front of us, the report of the Audit Committee from 12th of May. This is presented in line with the City of Brisbane Regulation. The Audit Committee reviews council's internal audit processes, and they monitor operational risks as well as the control measures for those operational risks. Throughout the year, council works with the Audit Committee and the Queensland Audit Office to ensure we meet all of our audit requirements. Now, it's important to understand that there are three layers of accountability when it comes to audit. There is our own internal council audit processes, so the internal auditors in council. Then there's the independent committee, which is the one that we're getting the report from. And then the third layer is the Queensland Audit Office. And so three layers of accountability, auditing potential risks and control measures and responses. And so we have an ongoing, very rigorous process. And that is something that continues day in, day out, month in, month out, and will continue. And that doesn't mean that council is not without risks. There are always risks when we come to an organisation like this that delivers services over such a wide area, has so many employees, has so many different locations, offers so many different services. Of course, there are risks, and it's all about making sure we have the processes in place to manage those risks. So that report is at item A. Item B is the lease of council land to community organisations. Item B is seeking approval to renew leases with 42 different clubs and organisations. City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 outlines that council cannot enter into a valuable non-current asset contract unless it first invites written tenders for the contract or offers the valuable non-current asset for sale by auction. We know that the City of Brisbane Regulation provides a number of exemptions that council may apply. And essentially, what we're doing here is these organisations have existing leases. They are existing tenants in our facilities or on our land, and we're renewing those. And so this is the process of approving those lease renewals. And so 42 different incredible organisations across the city, and I trust that all councillors will be supportive of this item.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on both these items and ask that they be taken seri artem for voting.
Seri artem AMB for voting, yes.
Yep. And as we just heard quite extraordinarily from this LMP Lord Mayor, it's something we have suspected for a long time, that he doesn't value council workers and doesn't think the people of Brisbane...
Point of order.
Point of order to you, Lord Mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
No doubt.
He doesn't think the people of Brisbane get good value for money from council workers. That's what he just said before. He said that by contracting out, by contracting out and getting labour hire workers...
Again misrepresented.
Thank you.
He said by contracting work out and getting labour hire workers instead of giving permanent secure jobs to people, that the people of Brisbane get better value for money. So to all those council employees listening and watching along, we value you. We value you, and the LMP don't.
Councillor Cassidy, to the items before us, please.
So like usual, Chair, clause A, the Audit Committee report, there is very little information contained in what councils are being provided in the papers before us today. This LMP administration avoids transparency like the plague. The committee was given an entire presentation on the 2022 Brisbane City Council Flood Review, yet as elected representatives, elected councillors, we weren't privy to any details about this presentation. And in fact, when we asked questions about the... presentation and in fact, when we asked questions about the number of submissions that were made to this review, we were told that that couldn't be provided because it was somehow external to council. That the council, this LNP administration, has no idea how many submissions were provided to the flood review, what was in those submissions, even though, even though an email address was set up, which was floodreview2022 or something like that, @brisbane.qld.gov.au. So all of those submissions for the flood review, which were discussed at this Audit Committee meeting, yeah, there's no, there is no, there is no public records whatsoever about, about these, about these submissions or about the briefing that the Audit Committee received on the flood review. So you've got to ask yourself the question, why, why is this being kept so secret? Why is the LNP hiding the number of flood submissions that were made, submissions that were made to the flood review and hiding details about what was discussed about that flood review at this Audit Committee? We also see in the Audit Committee there's an update on council's high risk rating audit findings. So under the LNP, council's net financial liabilities ratio is 203% and rated as higher risk while the SEQ council's average was just 17.06%. So what we've known for a very long time is that this LNP administration, through their focus on themselves and on these inner city projects that see cost blowout and delay after delay and cost blowout, that they are becoming a serious financial risk to the people of Brisbane. The net financial liabilities ratio again is 203%. Other South East Queensland councils are running at 17% currently. There's a footnote blaming changes on the accounting standards. Of course, they've been rolling that chestnut out for about the last three or four years now but even when you take that into, that explanation into it, it would be 127%, twice the maximum level. So sure, these things are being ordered and what they're finding is that this LNP Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinar and his LNP administration are a massive financial risk to the people of Brisbane. Hence why we're going to see rates continue to climb and people are going to see less and less delivered and less and less services out in the suburb for them. We also see councils, we're seeing it now, people can't even get their trees trimmed and their grass cut and their footpaths fixed or their busted and broken drains repaired. We also see the council's asset sustainability ratio is 80 over 80% and is rated at a moderate risk. That's probably a good one for this LNP administration when you look at it. And the most concerning thing is that these ratios are showing a deteriorating trend. Things are getting worse and worse under the LNP administration, which means the rates will be driven higher and higher and less and less will be delivered out in the suburbs. So we know, looking at any budget papers, any budget review, any annual plan and budget, that this LNP administration has, has left the people of Brisbane a huge amount of debt, a huge amount of debt and, and people are starting to ask the question, is it all good value for money? Out in the suburbs, do they see a good return on their rates? When they saw the $650 million spent on Kingsley Smith Drive, which is today a much more congested and slower road than it was before the upgrade. They see a metro project that was promised to be $944 million and today that price tag is at $1.7 billion. And, and half a billion dollars committed to these inner city green bridges and people can't even get broken title valves fixed by this LNP Lord Mayor. They have to wait three months and maybe six months to get a tree trimmed out in the suburbs. Parks aren't being mowed and when they are being mowed, it's a terrible, it's a terrible job in some places and we've seen that. We've seen that right across the city. We've seen that right across the city and footpaths languish, broken and busted and inaccessible to so many people around the city. And so residents are more and more often asking that question, are they getting good value for money out of the rates that this LNP administration is charging them? And, and when you see the debt levels rise to this level for a council, to eye-watering levels and a diminishing return out in the suburbs, I think come 2024, people will cast that judgement very harshly on this LNP administration. Clause B is the lease of land to council and community organisations. This is for around 40 community leases around Brisbane. These groups are all existing leases as we've heard and many of them have called these facilities home for many years. The clause allows the valued organisations to renew their leases without having to go through the expressions of interest process. Every single time we support this, this clause, of course, and I do, I think from memory, I'm not sure if I've got this wrong and councillor Johnston will be able to correct me, but I think it's something, this issue is something that you have raised in the past around the process following the change to the regulation and I do remember the LNP rubbishing those concerns that you raised at the time and saying, "You were wrong." And they said, "You were wrong, you were wrong" and then all of a sudden, all of a sudden, a few months later, they had to say, "Oh yeah, she was right actually after all" and they had to bring these items through to council. And it's a step, it's a step, supporting these organisations, so congratulations councillor Johnston. Supporting these organisations to having these leases and I've seen a few come through my ward as well for a longer period after advocating for that recently in my ward, to step in the right direction, of course. But what we, what we have seen, what we have seen throughout the pandemic and at the peak of the pandemic is this LNP Lord Mayor cutting grants for community clubs and rolling, so getting rid of a whole lot of support, rolling up a few different previous programmes into one and allocating less money to it and then claiming that the LNP was supporting community clubs. You know, we're getting used to seeing that. And last week, we saw this LNP Lord Mayor stand up and crying about support for eight, eight out of 331 clubs that were devastated by the recent floods. We've got the strange situation now of the former East Brisbane Bowls Club site, that's, that, that process unlike some of the other ones in, former LNP federal seats that were cancelled, like the Inogra Creek one, it's just been paused and so the bulldozers are still sitting ready to come in and demolish that community facility over there. So while we of course support the lease of community facilities to not-for-profit and community groups, this LNP administration has proven that they do the bare minimum, the bare minimum when it comes to supporting these groups out in the community and we should be doing so much more.
Thank you. Lord Mayor, your misrepresentation.
Yes, councillor Cassidy incorrectly claimed that I didn't support council workers and I didn't say anything of the kind. In fact, I said, "I don't see workers as two classes of workers depending on whether they're permanent or not" and that I see all workers as equal. And so he repeated that, misrepresented that, he made that inaccurate claim twice.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair and I rise to speak to the lease of council land to community organisations at item B. And I'd like to just put on the record that the, the eight organisations that were passed through this council chamber last week are just the beginning. It's a shame that those on the opposite side don't actually read the paperwork, don't actually understand the enormous work that has been done by our council officers in assessing what has been going on since our flood event. You know, it's amazing the work that they've done and for them to so quickly get to the point where we can help those eight organisations is nothing short of amazing and I want to congratulate those council officers for the work that they have done. The Shrinar Council is proud to support more than 600 community organisations across Brisbane through the provision of council land, including clubhouses, sports and recreation facilities, fields and halls. And I'm proud to speak in support of item B, which seeks to provide ongoing security of tenure for 42 of our dedicated community organisations across Brisbane. These 42 leases include community organisations from bright across the city, including Guides Clubs in Gibung, Tarrag Indian Carrandale, our dedicated Scout Branches in Cooperoo and Alderley, the Harmonious Voices of Birrally in Baden, the Al-Sarak Iraqi Association in Caraby, St Vincent de Paul Society in Brighton, the Wollston Parks and Tenry Cricket Club in Richlands and the Graceful Croquet Club, just to name a few Chair. Each of the 42 organisations before us today provide invaluable contributions to our local communities and I ask today that all councillors join me in supporting item B to make sure that they continue to do so with the full support of this chamber. I just once again want to put on record my appreciation to the hard work that all of our council officers right across council have done, particularly after the flood event but always they are out there working with those community organisations to make sure that we are supporting them and this is just one way that we are doing that. So I commend item B to the chamber.
Thank you. Councillor Howard, further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A and item B. I too, like councillor Cassidy, find it quite sad really that unelected, unelected people on the secret Audit Committee can get briefings on budget-related financial issues out of the recent floods but it's very hard for councillors to get that information. We saw last week massive cuts come through, no briefing for councillors, no discussion. This LNP just used their massive majority to run really substantial cuts to everyday and critical operations within Brisbane, including things like mowing and tree trimming and $13 million out of a $30 million stormwater budget. I mean, the Lord Mayor might stand up in here and criticise the Labour Party for not talking about stormwater but I can tell you for 11 years, I've annoyed everybody in here about it. And it is a shameful decision of this council that spends barely anything on stormwater management in this city to then cut almost half of the recurrent annual budget. And that is actually a bigger problem because of the rollovers from previous years and previous years and previous years. So actually a lot less is spent every year because of the financial mismanagement of this council administration. So it is, it is a real worry when people who aren't elected and who aren't actually responsible to the people of Brisbane can get briefings but councillors in this place can't. Now, I just want to talk about item B, the, the leases, community leases. Firstly, councillor Howard seems to take everything as an attack upon the officers. Councillor Cassidy got up and made some remarks about the council leasing process and how we've supported clubs during the floods and councillor Howard has taken that as some attack upon the officers, which it's not. I would just like to put on the record the following things, that firstly, there are three clubs in here that are getting leases in my ward and that's the Graceful Croquet Club, they're 102, they're a model organisation for how you should run your association. They find it extremely difficult and get very little support from council. They had to manage their own structural repairs, this is a group of 50 elderly people, they had to do it, council didn't do it for them. Council told them, "Here's $100,000, you go and manage a huge project." But that's fine, we're so pleased to giving them another four years on their lease. The Oxley Soccer Club, we've asked for some bins for the Oxley Soccer Club and they've not actually turned up yet. And the Oxley, Annalay Yoronga Country Women's Association, again, another extraordinary, I've got two CWA groups, another extraordinary group, there's only about 15 members there. They run a hall, they manage their budget. Every now and then they ask council to trim the heritage listed tree in their front yard because it's a huge tree in Yoronga Memorial Park and it's such a difficult issue, council says, "No, it's your tree, you have to manage it." I want to put on the record the following, this council, from a policy point of view and a leadership point of view, is not supporting our community sporting clubs in the way that they should. No community sporting club should be left to do major structural repairs on their own. No community sporting club should have to manage heritage listed trees or like the poor scouts at Yoronga Memorial Park have to do, 18 trees on the edge of their lease boundary. Their toilet block is not in their lease boundary but apparently all these trees are. It is a massive mess what is going on. I do not think that is the officers' fault. I believe that is the fault of the people who are running the council and that is the LNP administration, who for nearly 20 years have had control of this council and have not done anything to make it easier for these small community groups to carry out their activities. And that's what they're here to do. They're not here to rebuild the substructure of the floor at the 103-year-old Graceful Croquet Club, they're here to play croquet. This administration has got it wrong for such a long time that they cannot see where the problem is. And then councillor Howard stands up and says, "Oh, but we're only, we're, helping eight clubs is just the beginning." Well, I can tell you, one of the hardest hit clubs in my ward was South Cricket. South Cricket came forward and asked this council for $17,000 to help them replace their electricals and you know what this council said? No. This is a club flooded to the roof, all their grounds, all their lights, all their fences, all their equipment, the clubhouse, all the internals, all the cold rooms, all the kitchens, senior club, junior club. And do you know what council's given them to date? $5,000 to clean up. That's it. Now, if this council was genuine about helping community groups, they would have started with the $17,000 one of our oldest sporting clubs in Brisbane needed and they could have done that. But did they? No. They even put a proposal forward, they had the costings, they had exactly what they needed and this council said, "No." Guess who else this council is saying no to or just being incompetent? For over two years, I've been calling for a lease for the Carrington Boat Club to come forward, over two years. And again, many weeks ago now, I signed off on, for the third or fourth time, a lease renewal for them, this time for 10 years rather than four. They don't actually have a club anymore because it's completely gone. There were three walls left standing, boats gone, pontoons gone, the roof off the clubhouse gone, just completely gone. Now, council's announced money for them but they don't have a lease. Over and over again, I've supported it and it's still not come forward in the package today. Where is the lease for the Carrington Boat Club? I've signed off on it two years ago, again last year, again twice this year. Where is the lease for the Carrington Boat Club? Why does this tiny little sporting club in Brisbane, on the banks of the Brisbane River, keep getting ignored by council? Over and over again, it's been raised every time this comes in here and the Carrington Boat Club still don't have a lease. I know and I've signed off on it, I've signed off on it multiple times over two years and it's still not coming up. So councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor now is wandered back into the chamber, where's the lease for the Carrington Boat Club? How much longer does a tiny little flood-affected club have to wait for a lease? It's been more than two years that we've been asking, more than two years. Not having a lease affects what grants they can apply for. They've got to get a letter from council saying, "Oh yes, we'll let them have a grant application." Do you know how much that complicates it for these poor groups trying to apply for funding? Do your work, get the Carrington Boat Club lease up here and support our local clubs. Secondly, put more in place to support these clubs, they should not be doing major structural works themselves, they should not be applying for grants to do the structural work. In any kind of lease arrangement, it is the owner that is responsible for managing these buildings, that is us, Brisbane City Council, and the groups are responsible for maintenance, not fixing structural problems, not trying to cut down heritage trees that they can't afford to do. This council does do things like this. So in my view councillor Howard, when you stand up and say, you know, "Labour's attacking the officers," no, be clear, we're attacking you and I'm attacking you and the other LNP chairs and the Lord Mayor and all of the majority in here for failing to put the money where it is needed to support flooded clubs and failing to put the policies in place to support these groups to carry out their activities with... place to support these groups to carry out their activities without the stress of having to manage major repairs. It is wrong the way this administration treats clubs, and if there's a change coming in this council at some point, any other, any other administration at some point in the future, looking at how to better support community clubs has got to be one of the number one issues on the list. Because I know, and everybody else here knows, that volunteers are finding it harder and harder to do this work, whereas this council has the power and the resources to do it properly and isn't.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on item B today, and I do actually rise to speak on item B and what is actually in the report compared to some other people. And I would like to thank the officers and the work that they have done over the last several years, which have been difficult times during COVID, difficult times because the clubs have had difficulties with COVID and the weather, but also some of those clubs have been very difficult to contact during the COVID times as well. I am very proud to say that there are five clubs within my local ward that are on this list today, and they are five amazingly coordinated and dedicated clubs that do wonderful work right across the community. First of all, I'll put the first two together, the Brisbane Visual Arts Community and the Girl Guides, they're both in Weller Road Park, fantastic, small but effective clubs that have benefited from some fantastic access and inclusion upgrades over the last several years from council that have made them even more accessible to people of all abilities, whether they are artistic and want to go out and show their inner creativity, or the young girls who pop down after Weller's Road State School has finished and join in their Girl Guides activities for the afternoon. Again, small groups but dedicated groups that do an absolutely amazing job. The Tarragindi Tigers are a very large soccer club that are definitely bursting at the seams since COVID and work across several schools as well for their fields. They have a brand new clubhouse that was built with the support of the state and the federal government, and then us through leasing as well, and I can assure you that the Tarragindi Tigers would not at any time consider that they have any issues with council and the support they get for the maintenance, the upgrading, and the work that they need around their fields. The team down there of Tarragindi Tigers do an amazing job, they've got their irrigation in there as well, and with the new clubhouse, they're going from strength to strength, they will definitely appreciate the extension, continuation of this lease. Blue Care, again, a slightly different, not a community club, but definitely a community group that does amazing work within the community, looking after those people whose carers need some respite. So I've had some fantastic morning teas and birthday parties. Pre-COVID, we had the 107th birthday of a beloved local resident, we're hoping to hit the 109th or 110th this year now that we've gotten out of COVID lockdown as well. But Blue Care do some amazing work, and they've been for over 20 years at this site on Logan Road, supporting those carers who need a little bit of time out, and recently have also worked with council on that site to establish their own men's shed, so they're across the road from my very large Malcavat men's shed, and they have a secondary campus over there to help those with special needs and high care needs as well, to be able to be active in the men's shed. And last but by my means least, the Holland Park Sport and Rec, formerly known as Holland Park Bowls Club, they benefit out of the amalgamation with the Linden Bowls Club, which was sold to the Ukrainian community, which is down in Holland Park, they established themselves as the Holland Park Sport and Rec Club, and here is an example of a club going from strength to strength during COVID. As a sport and rec club, they obviously still have bowls, that is very, very important, they obviously still have a bar that sells beers at 1990s prices, they also have an air-conditioned hall which they are generating revenue by hiring that out as well, they have a coffee shop that is open in the morning now, which caters for the neighbouring school's parents when they come in, and they are looking for strength to strength to other co-located surfaces on their site as well. They last year celebrated their 80th birthday, and it was wonderful to be there with Bronwyn Graham and the team as well. These five clubs will genuinely appreciate the extension of their lease, some of them for looking for a bit of a longer lease in the coming years, which I know we can start working through now that this has been sorted, but I thank the officers for the work that they've done with my clubs in this area, and I recommend the report to the chambers.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Sree?
Thanks, just on item B with the club lease, really quickly, there's one venue that's not listed there unfortunately, which is the East Brisbane Bowls Club, and I don't want to reopen a long debate about that, but I did just want to highlight that the building itself has been closed for quite a while now, and I'm worried that it's going to get a bit musty in there and mouldy, and I hope councillor Howard could look at sending down some council offices to at least open the windows and ventilate the space. So whatever we decide to do with it, just don't let it get mouldy in the meantime. Thanks.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Mackay?
Thank you, Chair, I rise to speak on item B, the lease of land to community organisations. As has been previously raised in this chamber, item B is seeking council's approval to renewed leases with 42 community organisations. Item B is seeking council's approval to apply this extension so that we can continue with lease negotiations with these 42 valued community organisations, including the wonderful and much valued Fictory Pocket Equestrian Club based in that special part of Brisbane that is Fictory Pocket. The FTPEC is based on about 40 acres nestled between the River to the West and Lone Pine Koala Sanctuary across the road to the east. The club offers a wide range of events for a variety of equestrian sport disciplines, including international events. Unless I'm very much mistaken, my memory is that this is the only internationally accredited equestrian park within Brisbane, and it's very interesting, Chair, to remember that former Labour Lord Mayor Clem Jones was going to turn this little area into a housing estate, and I'm led to believe that Sally Anne Atkinson saved it. In early 2020, Fictory Pocket Equestrian Club was awarded a grant through Brisbane City Council's Building Stronger Communities Programme to improve club governance and long-term sustainability. Council has further been able to support the club through managing the impact and recovery from this year's flood event, with the club gaining access to both a sport and rec officer's support and by receiving funding under council's Community Facility Disaster Relief Programme. Just last week, I went down and enjoyed a late afternoon meeting with the new exec at the club. Sally, the new president, and Heidi, the new secretary, took me on a tour of the property and showed me around the facilities. The new exec is planning big things between now and the Olympics, they would love to position themselves as a contender for training and preparation location for the Brisbane Olympics. Considering it's only 14 kilometres from the city centre, the FTPEC is ideally positioned to offer facilities not only for riders but a wider community. The club regularly hosts community social nights, engagements and entertainment. Sally has a vision to engage the community with options possibly such as social memberships and using the facilities as local meeting spaces. Approval of this item will allow us to provide continued security for the club and the community. This will provide a positive outcome, and I know the community is much loved, correction, the facility is much loved by the community and valued by neighbours near and wide. I commend item B to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Mackay. Further speakers? councillor Lanis?
Thank you, Chair, I also rise to speak on item B and to support the lease with Brackenridge Cricket. The Brackenridge Cricket Club was established in 1983 and hold the lease at MacPherson Park in the heart of Brackenridge. The clubhouse was actually built by the club members themselves, and there are some great photos within the clubhouse on the walls that show some progressive shots of that being built. And some of the members in the photos are still actually there and are now life members such as Mark Jennings and Keon White, who work hard to maintain the field and keep the club running, and invariably if I'm at MacPherson Park, I will always run into one of them. The membership is currently made up of 70 juniors and 40 seniors, and the club plays in summer under the QSDCA or the Queensland Sub District Cricket Association, and in winter under the WCA or Warehouse Cricket Association. So Chair, I am very happy to support this lease being renewed, and I know the club will welcome new players at any time.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? No? Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Well, just briefly, in relation to a couple of items that came up in discussion, it's interesting because I would recommend through you, Mr Chair, that councillor Cassidy familiarises himself with the story of the boy who cries wolf, because I think is very relevant here, because for years and years he's been saying these outrageously untrue things, to the point where now no one believes him, and if there was actually ever a legitimate issue that he were to raise, he might find himself in a spot of bother. Because for years and years, he's been making untrue claims about the investment in basic services, the state of the council budget, which is incredibly strong given the sheer volume of infrastructure that we're investing in, plus the financial shocks that we've had with the COVID pandemic and floods. There is no other level of government that has a better and stronger budget than we do. It's just not. Yet councillor Cassidy continues to say these patently untrue things about the state of our budget and what we invest in. And so, just a word of warning or maybe a word of wisdom, boy who cried wolf, councillor Cassidy brush up on that story. It's funny, because as a former finance chair in this place, I remember, like even 15 years ago, Labour councillors were saying, oh, the debt's out of control, it's going to send the city broke, oh, we're all doomed, remember that? Kim Flesher, Kim Flesher used to say those things, and we referred to him as Chicken Little at the time, but the sky did not fall in. And in fact, what happened since then is we invested in record infrastructure, billions of dollars' worth of infrastructure were built, and guess what? The budget remained strong, and we invested records, record amounts into the suburbs of Brisbane. And so, we will continue to make sure that we're investing for the growth of the city, and we continue to, because the state government continues to fob off their own responsibilities, they can't even, they can't even deal with basic things that they are responsible for, like the health system, the education system or public housing, they can't do that well, but they still continue to put other responsibilities on to councils, in particular Brisbane City Council, the biggest one being public transport, where they are responsible for public transport, yet they have vacated the field when it comes to any investment in the bus network, any investment in the busway network, and that leaves the only people that are willing to do anything is us. It would be wonderful if we had $1.7 billion free to invest in other things. It would be wonderful, wouldn't it? We could do amazing things with that, but guess what? We can't, because the city will grind to a halt if we don't invest in our public transport system. And so we have to. And it's not just that we have to, it's the right thing to do, and so we're doing it. Now, other councils don't have anywhere near those responsibilities, other councils don't build major roads or public transport projects, other councils aren't expected to do those things, and so we have a very different role, and we accept that role, we'd like to see more support from the state government or the levels of government, but we've always been willing to step forward and to cater for the needs of our growing city, and we will continue to do so. In relation to the issues that councillor Johnston raised, I will say that I think in some respects, some of the issues that she raised are very legitimate, and some that have been of concern to us as an administration. Our clubs and community and sporting groups across the city have varying capacities to, I guess, invest, reinvest in facilities and raise money. Some are absolute professional machines that, you know, they have a plan to upgrade facilities, they raise the money, they make it happen, they do amazing things, but not all clubs have those same capabilities. And so, as we go through the rebuilding and recovery process from the floods, one of the things that we are looking at is how we can make lease arrangements work better for our community and our clubs. And so that would mean looking at changes, where clubs just do not have the capability to take on maintenance responsibilities that other clubs might, that we look at a process that sees them on a different arrangement. And so, we are very focused on improving this situation, and by all means, the clubs that our city has range from the very smallest organisations with very few members and very little ability to raise money, up to these major organisations that are just so professional, Kedron Wavell Services Club would be one example, ESTS down in Stone's Corner, another example, you know, these are big organisations professionally run that can pump money back into facilities and the community, and they do, and it's a great outcome, but not all organisations are the same. And so, what I can assure councillor Johnston of is that our modified approach going forward will be taking that into mind very carefully, and we'll be looking at how we can support those smaller organisations that have less capacity to do the fundraising and invest in their facilities. And so, we will very much be focused on that, councillor Johnston, and I think it'll be a very positive thing for the city of Brisbane.
Thank you, councillors. We now move to the vote on the ENC report in two parts. Item A, all in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Division?
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Cumming. Thank you. Ayes to the right, noes to the left, please, ring the bells. Thank you. Thank you, clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 6 against.
Thank you. Turn to your seats, please. Now move to the vote on item B. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move an urgency motion calling on Brisbane City Council to introduce a new rating category for residential owner occupiers, creating a new class of natural disaster affected uninhabitable homes, and that rates are set at 25% of the amount usually levied under the resolutions of rates and charges for a period of up to 12 months.
Second it.
Councillor Johnson, you're moving a suspension of standing rules under 12.3, you must establish why you weren't able to include this motion for debate on the agenda.
Mr Chair, I can actually clarify that we already do this and we have the capability to do this.
Well, the motion is for suspension of standing rules, that's the first vote. There's a motion for the suspension of standing rules, all in favour of the suspension of standing rules. You can have three minutes to establish why you want to suspend standing rules.
Yes, thank you. I'd be very interested in a debate if the Lord Mayor is going to allow such a debate, but the reason I'm raising this motion today is in question time, the Lord Mayor indicated that the budget has not yet been finalised for 2022, 2023. We've had another major natural disaster in the city with the big floods, but there could be other natural disasters in the city. It's come to my attention that this council will not offer substantive rates relief for homeowners whose homes are uninhabitable. I have made a request for residents in my area where there has been a major landslide and their homes have been rendered uninhabitable, and council has said no, they've said the only money available to these people is the $250 rebate. So if what the Lord Mayor is saying is true in his interjection earlier, that there already is provision to make rates- is provision to make rates relief for uninhabitable homes, there is a very serious problem with why I'm being told that it's not available to residents with uninhabitable homes. So I think we need to have a debate. The Lord Mayor can hop up and tell me why I'm wrong, but I want to make sure that those residents whose homes are uninhabitable get true rates relief. And it is quite urgent because there's still an opportunity to set up a provision of this kind in the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget, as the Lord Mayor has said it's not finalised.
Thank you. Councillors, the motion before us is for the suspension of standing rules. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Johnson, your motion, please.
Thanks. I'll be, I'll be quick. Wasn't really expecting that, but anyway.
Are you circulating that? So is it?
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I've got a handwritten motion here.
I'm happy to repeat it. It's pretty straightforward. It basically is asking for a new category of rates to be set up in the next budget for it to be levied at twenty five percent of the usual rating category for that person. And this would be available for residential occupier, owner occupiers, I'm sorry, for some real rates relief for them. It's been seconded?
Seconded.
I could have just read it all out again if you wanted me to. Okay, well, I've got, I've got my copy. All right. Sorry. So.
Point of order, Chair. Mr Chair, as per section forty two to be of the Meeting's Local Law two thousand and one, I move a procedural motion that the debate on the motion now before the meeting be adjourned until the conclusion of today's business on today's agenda. Seconded.
Mr Chair, you don't have your microphone on. You don't have your microphone on, sorry.
Thank you. All right. My apologies, I turned the mic off to talk to the clerks. I'll repeat what I just said. We have a procedural motion before us to move the motion that has been agreed to, to the end of today's meeting at the conclusion of today's agenda. All in, can I ask you all, please, all in favour of that motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Councillors, we move on with the rest of the agenda, which is the Economic Development and Brisbane twenty thirty two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty fourth of May, twenty twenty two, for the Economic Development and Brisbane twenty thirty two Olympic and Paralympic Games be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane twenty thirty two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty four May, twenty twenty two be adopted. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And as is required and as I want to share about the World Unions of Olympic City meeting that I did last week, it does relate obviously to the Brisbane twenty thirty two Olympic and Paralympic Games. And I want to share with the chambers the wonderful opportunity there was to work with other Olympic cities, to get to know other coordinators of OCOGS, past, present and ones that are coming up like us as well, and share so many ideas around Olympic legacy and legacy activation over the three days that we had in Athens. The World Union of Olympic Cities is founded by the city of Athens and the city of Lissan, so therefore represented by the mayors of both those cities, but strongly supported by the I O C. And that was clearly seen in their presence there at all the functions as well. It was wonderful, as I said, to socially meet the representatives, particularly the vice mayors and mayors of those cities that have hosted Olympics in the recent past as well, but also to have a look at some of the working sessions that we went through as well. In particular, a standout of one of the working sessions was from Olympic legacy to legacy activation. So this was an I O C presentation on the report of the use of Olympic venues. So the International Olympic Committee has tracked the post-games use of over nine hundred Olympic venues at fifty one summer and winter editions of the Olympic Games from Athens eighteen ninety six right through to Pyeongchang in twenty eighteen. So it was very interesting to hear about what happens to Olympic venues when games come to end. Obviously changes from the twentieth century to the twenty first century as well, and how that they can best be used to serve their local communities going forward. Now, this report came out of obviously the decision by the I O C to have a New North and you can see the distinct difference when the early twentieth century, there's only twenty one percent of the Olympic sites still in use, but that's to be expected with the end of life. Some of them damaged by war and a lot of them damaged by weather and too expensive to replace. But from the twenty first century, ninety two percent of the permanent sites are still used for the communities across the cities that have held the Olympics. And the existing and temporary venues going forward in Paris, Milan, L A and Brisbane have got well over eighty three percent of those venues being used now for sport and planning to be used for the future as well. So there's a lot of learnings out of that and conclusions on how we can make sure that any new events and new venues that will be delivered through the Olympics are definitely something that's going to fit in to Brisbane and what we need as well. In particular, making sure that they're multiple use, they're not something that's just for a single sport, that we work with all stakeholders, and that's just not government stakeholders, but private partnerships, all community and sporting groups as well, and make sure that they are adapting to the time as well. So obviously venues that are new, and we're thinking here of the Albion Precinct, are ones that will definitely be what we need for twenty thirty two to twenty forty two, but how that they will get regularly updated to meet the needs of our growing city and their healthy and active choices going forward as well. In saying that, we also then also had the Mayor's Roundtable Discussion, which was based on exactly that, the active cities, the Olympic City's health and physical activity commitment. And that was a wonderful opportunity to join with many of the mayors that were there in person and online as well. As I said, Athens and Lissan obviously, but also Barcelona Vice Mayor, Chamonix Montblanc, Lake Passard, Saint Moritz, several I O C members and the Vice Mayors from Los Angeles and Paris. This was a roundtable commitment that we all signed to make sure that since Covid has led to such a sedentary lifestyle, that we really were prioritising physical activity as a solution and embedding it in our city's social fabric. I was very proud to present a five minutes on what Brisbane does in this space and I can assure you, even at an L A level and a Paris level, we are strict ahead when it comes to the level of healthy and active programmes that we provide for free or very low cost to our residents, how many venues we have and how much activity our residents actually do. I think our climate obviously is a large part of that, but everybody was very impressed, to say the least, of how much we already work with our stakeholders, we utilise our existing resources and more than anything, we promote physical activity through commuting with providing safe footpaths, green bridges, bikeways and everything else we do in between as well. So it was wonderful to hear what the other cities are doing, what they're planning to do out of their legacy from the Olympics, particularly from Paris and L A, and take away some tips on how we can move forward with that as well. So we do have representatives from Barcelona coming over later in the year and representatives from the city host office talking with all of those cities over the next twelve months to make sure we can get that legacy right. As far as back in Brisbane though, the Business Hub is humming as always. There is one, just one event that is actually on in the next week and that is on tomorrow at nine thirty a m, Build Your Business Despite the Chaos, a woman's guide to success and sanity. We've had a recent few great events actually in the Business Hub. One of them was the Evening with the Lord Mayor, Adrian Schriner on the Lord Mayor's Women in Business Grants Celebration. It was wonderful, as the Lord Mayor will attest, to see so many successful grant applicants really talking about the valuable support that we provided to them and specifically to those ones that were small and micro businesses as well. So there is a lot of inspiration that's coming out of the Business Hub through our support and through our grants programmes and our ongoing mentoring through that hub as well. As it comes to the report last week, I wasn't there last week, but we were talking about the Suburban Business Hub and of course, another great success of the Schriner Council to make sure that we had feet on the grounds in the northern suburbs, to make sure that we have support for all of those businesses that need it, whether it's a talk to the planner, food licensing, business liaison offices, networking in the suburbs, monthly local business morning teas and a series of other activities. We've had over sixteen hundred people that have come through the hub to date since it's been set up and I'm sure there'll be many more. It's a great opportunity to have a set place that we can set up for workshops and events in the northern suburbs. And it's been officially open in May last year, so it's just had its twelve month anniversary. And we look forward to seeing far more free events, workshops and masterclasses, not just for businesses on the, on the south side. People can come from all over Brisbane. If they don't come into the Business Hub in town, Nunda is there for them as well. And of course, we continue with our programmes right across the city as well. I will leave the report to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Landers? Afternoon tea? Oh, no, well, are we going to move to the, no further speakers? Okay, I'll move to the, the vote on the report. Okay. As there are no other speakers, we now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed? Please say no. The ayes have it. Now, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the meeting adjourned for a period of fifteen minutes for afternoon tea. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty fourth of May, twenty twenty two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty four May, twenty twenty two be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Mr Chair, last week, the Transport Committee received an update on one of the centrepieces of the Metro project, which is the Adelaide Street Tunnel. The Schriner Council's vision to deliver a world-class transport system for our city very much hinges on the critical infrastructure in the heart of the CBD, which is the Adelaide Street Tunnel. Our terribly congested bus network has been crying out for some relief for a very long time. As the Lord Mayor said, the state government has essentially vacated the field when it comes to funding infrastructure on our busway network. Currently, Adelaide Street is one of our major public transport thoroughfares, but congestion on the Victoria Bridge and our inner city stations are choking our busway network. This tunnel will provide a dedicated public transport corridor between the cities south and north, alleviating surface congestion and allowing us to revitalise Adelaide Street. Construction on the tunnel has been underway since last September and later this week we will reach another milestone in the construction of the tunnel with the second half of the piling works to commence. With fifty percent of piling now complete, it is time for construction to switch to the other side of Adelaide Street to allow works to be completed on the other half of the tunnel portal. And if any councillors or chairs have been up to the top of Adelaide Street in the last few days, near where it meets with North Key, they will see already a lot of the scaffolding and false work has been removed from that side of Adelaide Street. And you can see part of what will be the completed roof of the dive structure there and it looks quite an impressive, it looks like quite an impressive piece of engineering. The traffic changes that are currently in place at Adelaide Street and North Key will remain in place, however, through traffic will be reallocated to the Brisbane Quarter side of Adelaide Street to allow for works to be completed outside Brisbane Square from the sixth of June. Following the completion of piling, work will turn to the tunneling phase where canopy tubes and sprayed concrete will be used to create the tunnel profile. The tunnel will then be excavated in one metre sections using a mined tunneling solution, which was chosen in order to minimise disruption to businesses, pedestrians and commuters. While I'm on the topic of construction, Mr Chair, I also wanted to just briefly talk about some of the works that are upcoming in the city's south. Metro includes a number of upgrades to key stations along the busway, including Burandah, the Cultural Centre Station and UQ Lakes. We know, Chair, that the Cultural Centre Station is one of the most important stations in our bus network and currently that's where most connections between the north side and south side services take place, or where north side and south side interchanges take place, I should say. But this station is also at capacity and everybody who catches a bus in Brisbane will know that Cultural Centre Station can get heavily congested, especially during peak times. So we will be transforming the Cultural Centre Station and the surrounding area to improve the efficiency and the throughput for our customers there. We'll also be revitalising the streetscape and providing upgraded walkways and cycling pathways. Last year, we completed our early works programme in South Brisbane by relocating sewer infrastructure and completing an upgrade of four different intersections within the South Brisbane Precinct. While we always do our best to minimise construction impacts to support these works, there will be some changes to traffic in and around the station itself. Residents will have already noticed an increased project presence in the area with some site facilities having already been established. The first stage of major construction will start next month, meaning some traffic changes will be implemented from Thursday this week. These works will form stage one of the major works at South Brisbane and will involve service relocation, some intersection upgrade works, as well as construction of the lift shaft near Q pack. To facilitate these works on Gray Street and Melbourne Street, a number of changes will be required during construction. Gray Street will be reduced to one lane of traffic in each direction between Russell Street and Peel Streets. Melbourne Street will also be closed to general traffic between Hope Street and Gray Street. This means that general traffic travelling towards Gray Street will need to detour via Hope Street northbound or Maryvale Street southbound. For cyclists, a shared pedestrian and cyclist route will be maintained via Fish Lane through the Cultural Centre Precinct. Stage two will commence later this year and involve some additional changes to the Cultural Centre bus station that I will share with the chamber at a later date. I encourage residents and commuters that frequent the CBD to continue to monitor council's website to ensure they're aware of the changes coming into effect. I want to thank residents and visitors in advance for their patience during these traffic changes, which are necessary for us to construct what is the most transformative public transport infrastructure project in Queensland.
Thank you. Further debate? Further debate? Councillor Three.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just on the Metro report as well, I'm obviously excited to see this project progressing. There are two issues I wanted to flag though. One is just that the combination of all the different areas that have been used as layover for the Metro is actually starting to add up to quite a big chunk of parkland that's being taken away from the community. So between Karilpa Point Park, where there's a layover area, and then around South Bank Parklands, there's another big layover area. And then meanwhile, the Queens Wharf Casino Bridge has fenced off another chunk of South Bank for a layover area. And then just back one street on Melbourne Street, that whole corner has been fenced off. So it's interesting to reflect on the fact that for the next kind of two, two and a half years, multiple different green spaces around the area have been fenced off from public access. And that maybe would be okay if this was a one-off thing, but this is part of a broader pattern where we continue to use public parkland for construction site storage and layover facilities, et cetera. And it would be nice if, as part of a project budget, the council just arranged with some other developers who have vacant sites and said, look, let's just turf this block of land and turn it into a temporary park for the next two years, because the developers just waiting to develop it anyway and it doesn't have anything else to do with the land. And council could rent those blocks at a nominal rent and maintain them and keep them secure. This is something that happens in a lot of other cities around the world where you say, look, we're going to work with the industry so that these sites, rather than sit in derelict and vacant, will turn them into temporary parks. And that helps offset, offset the negative impacts of so much parkland being closed off to the public. I'm pretty frustrated about Karilpa Point Park in, in particular, because it was fenced off for quite a while for some other construction work projects. And then just when it reopened and the fences came down and they put in new turf, then Metro comes along and says, oh, we're fencing this off again. So I think in the last kind of four or five years, we've only had about six months where that park has been open to the community. That's, yeah, anyway, that, I'll leave that point there. The other issue I wanted to flag is just in terms of the road closures. I'm concerned that the alternative cycling route for, or the alternative route for pedestrians and cyclists via Fish Lane is not safe and not practical. The volume of cars that are currently used in Fish Lane, particularly to service the, some of the hotels and restaurants along there, but also as an access to their driveways, that volume of cars is quite high now. And I think the, I worry that the Metro team has I worry that the Metro team has underestimated just how many pedestrian and vehicle conflicts there could be along that little laneway. There's a few points along the laneway, for example, where there are construction sites at the moment, so there's a lot of hoarding and fencing up and not much visibility around the corners as well. And so I hope that the team has kind of done their homework and made sure that this is actually a safe alternative route for cyclists and pedestrians. The volumes that are using... that currently use Melbourne Street and that will be diverted to these areas aren't huge, it's not sort of massive volumes, but there are enough cyclists and pedestrians that currently use those main routes that are being closed off, and that will be enough to cause a bit of... a few issues on Fish Lane. As always, my preference is that we take away a few bays of parking and create some dedicated bike lanes on some of the other corridors, even if only temporarily. And personally, I'd be quite supportive of closing Fish Lane to cars during the peak hours, because it's... there are alternative routes available, and you could quite easily say, 'Look, during peak hours, this is a pedestrian and bike route, and outside of those peak hours, then cars can come in and the loading vehicles can come and service the restaurants and all that sort of stuff.' I'm talking specifically about the stretch of Fish Lane closest to Melbourne Street and not the other end of Fish Lane, which is also driveway access for residential apartments. Please don't misquote me on that later, councillor Wines. I'm just trying to give good faith suggestions here, and it's a bit disappointing sometimes when I make reasonable suggestions and they're taken out of context and then falls off giving press releases to the media as a way to try and score cheap points. So I'm just raising a genuine legitimate issue here and offering practical solutions. There is a lot of disruption happening around that side of the Victoria Bridge, and I hope the council offices are thinking really carefully about how best to mitigate and manage that. As stated previously, I would strongly support closing off and cul-de-sac in the Gray Street intersection where it meets Melbourne Street. I don't think that needs to remain open to cars long term, and I think it's really disappointing that big institutions like QPAC and perhaps South Bank Corporation to some extent have prioritised profits from their underground car parks ahead of the general public interest. It would be better for the entire South Bank precinct if Gray Street did not function as a through corridor for cars and instead was a local access road route for local traffic. And it would in fact save the Metro project a lot of cost and a lot of hassle if the Metro project didn't have to keep Gray Street open through the Melbourne Street intersection for the duration of construction at the very least. So I just wanted to restate that I am supportive of closing off that section of Gray Street either temporarily or permanently in order to facilitate the Metro project. And I think council should go back to organisations like QPAC and Queensland Museum and just say, 'Look, are you sure we can't close this off for a couple of months?', just to make it that little bit easier to undertake this work. Looking at the sort of construction schedule and some of the plans of how this thing's going to be staged, it just seems quite obvious to me that if the council was willing to close off Gray Street at least temporarily during the construction period, you'd save a lot of time and a lot of hassle for your own contractors and your own project team. And it seems like the arguments in favour of keeping it open are pretty emotional. They're not based on a robust analysis of the transport network or the needs of the area. So maybe there's a case there to be, yeah, looking a bit more closely at that opportunity. Also, still hoping to see the free bus loop that was announced to come through a little bit sooner. Originally, the proposal from council was that the bus loop would start to help mitigate some of these disruptions and road closures and impacts to businesses, et cetera. So if all this work is starting now, and we're going to see all these disruptions to the precinct, why isn't the bus... that free bus loop being introduced now? Why is that being delayed until the end of the year? Maybe councillor Murphy can shed a little bit more light on the timing of that free bus route, because that's been funded out of the Metro project and I think is a fairly important piece of the puzzle to ensure that disruptions from the construction are minimised. Thanks.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Chair. And at significant risk of sometimes the Transport Committee report being a conversation had between councillors Sri and myself, I'll just cover off on a few of those questions just in respect of the Karoolpa Point laydown facility. The Metro team appreciate that these site facilities may cause an inconvenience, but they are very necessary for construction of the project at this location. In terms of councillor Sri suggesting that we use car parks and vacant land and other facilities, well, I can say we're already doing that. So in this area, we have placed necessary site facilities in car parks, in unused utility service areas, and indeed on top of a disused sewer main station. So it's not just parkland that we use when it comes to using vacant land for the purposes of laydown areas. But I want to make the point that the Brisbane Metro project as a whole includes very significant public realm improvements for the South Brisbane area, which includes wider footpaths and additional vegetation. Of course, there is Pocket Park as well at one-two-five Gray Street. So that will be... A new Pocket Park will be created after construction of Brisbane Metro is completed that will add green space to the area. Now, in terms of how long we will be in the Karoolpa Point area, at the moment, we expect to be in there from the first of May this year until December twenty twenty-three, so some significant time. But we will be out of there, of course, earlier if we can. In terms of the suggestion for pop-up parks, Chair, look, it's not something that we have done here in this city historically. Obviously, it's something that our major projects area can have a look at and are more than happy to consider, but that would be, I think, part of a wider public policy change. We have to remind councillor Sri that any cost that is added to these projects is inevitably borne by all rate pay. So we want to do pop-up parks for residents in South Brisbane that have some access to significant parklands, and that will be borne by all residents within the city. So... But we're happy to have a look at that. I know it happens in other jurisdictions where the parkland is treated essentially as an asset that needs to be relocated somewhere else, so we will have a look at that and come back to you. In terms of the Fish Lane detour, well, we've had a really good look at this, Chair. We've had our engineers working on this for some time. There is simply no better place to relocate the bikeway. We have interactions with the portal and the busway on Melbourne Street, and we also have to remember that Fish Lane is not... It is a pedestrianised environment. It is quite friendly to cyclists and pedestrians at the moment. The delivery vehicles that do go in there are generally at quite a slow speed and are necessary to service those restaurants that are in there. And keep in mind, councillor Sri, how hard those restaurants have been hit by years of COVID lockdowns and other issues that have impacted them. So the last thing we really want to be doing is changing the times that they're able to take deliveries and make it harder for them. So this is a balance. We will see how it works in operation in the first few weeks and months, and if there are changes that need to be made, I'm more than happy to have a further conversation with you at that time.
Point of order to you, councillor Sri.
Councillor, maybe you take one more quick clarificatory question?
Sure.
Thanks.
Councillor Murphy.
Sorry, it's not on my side of the river, so I'm a little less familiar with it, but I understand as part of this work around the bridge, you're also closing off that access ramp from the bicentennial bikeway up to Victoria Bridge and up to North Key. So how then... How will cyclists who are coming along the bicentennial bikeway get up to the city or get over to the south side?
I do have the answers to that question, but I will just take it on notice and maybe get back to councillor Sri later offline. Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Murphy. We now move to the vote on the Transport Committee report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mister Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of May, twenty twenty, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Maddick that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-fourth May, twenty twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mister Chair. The report before us and the report before the committee last week was one we had seen before, where we give a regular update to committee members about the operation of the inner-city transport network and the... An update on major projects, which has a wide scope. So I trust that the councillor's president found it informative. The presenter provided a great deal of information on a whole range of things, both public and private transport, as well as state and council projects. Interestingly, some councillors and some residents may believe that inner-city traffic is getting up to where it was, but is still up to five thousand vehicles a day on George Street, for example, less than it was before the pandemic hit. So I think that... I think that some behaviours... Some behaviour changes happened, because as we know, public transport is still a little bit down, private motor vehicles are still a little bit down, so there's still a little way to go before we have full activation of people back into the city for work and enjoyment. Can I also take a moment as well on a portfolio? Maddick, can I also give a special recognition to a Mister Graham Nell, who has retired? And Graham worked with this council for thirteen years. He retired as the manager of Civil and Transport, one of the senior managers inside the City Projects Office. He was a fundamental importance to delivery of large projects in this city, which includes Gresham Street Bridge and... I was... Excuse me, it took me a second to hear where the voice was from. Yes. You know, our Intrapilly River Walk, the last major project that he and I were working on together was, of course, the Mogal Road upgrade. So he... That was the last major project that he... The most major contract that he worked on before. He retired. He was here with us for thirteen years, starting out in bikeways. That is also where I first met him. Can I thank him for his service to our organisation and wish him all the best as he sets sail across Lake Eyre, he tells me, was the objective. So I hope that he and his wife enjoy the retirement that's well-earned, and I recommend the report to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? Further debate on the Infrastructure Committee report? Now put the report to the vote. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of May, twenty twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-fourth May, twenty twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mister Chair. In last week's committee meeting, we had a really interesting presentation on a DA that's been approved recently for an adaptive reuse of a commercial building at four-four-four Queen Street. And this building in particular was an interesting project in that the old building, which was a pretty horrible building, I might say, in terms of its visual appeal... Sorry? It was ugly, councillor Strunk, absolutely. The... Rather than demolish the whole building and rebuild again, they actually stripped away the old shell, used a lot of the existing structure of the building to bring about the new building, which is a very, very significant improvement on what's currently on the site. So what they'll end up with once the building is completed is a twenty-four-storey tower. The tower will have twenty-one storeys of leasable office space. There'll be a ground-level food and drink outlets and a lobby. There's two levels of podium parking, and there's also a rooftop garden. Now, the building itself is certainly more modern in appeal and appearance than the previous building, and it encompasses quite a significant amount of greenery. And one of the key considerations for the building was to ensure that it recognised and was sympathetic to our subtropical climate, and accordingly, the design is very much focused on light, the movement of air, the greenery in the building, the streetscape, making sure that that's appealing and has utility to the community, and also ensuring that pedestrians on that section of Queen Street had protection from the weather, and accordingly, there's quite a large awning there. The other key consideration is this building is actually adjoining a heritage site, and they've done a terrific job in terms of developing a podium that is very sympathetic to the adjoining heritage site, while it is designed in a different way to the heritage building, the colours and the materials used are consistent. And so it doesn't... It's very complimentary to the heritage site. It doesn't impose over the heritage site, and I think they've achieved a very good outcome there. The other key assessment matters were around the refuse and transport, and they've done a great job with ensuring that they've got adequate parking, particularly for active transport and end-of-trip facilities. The... One of the complexities, I guess, in the approval was there is a nearby residential tower, and they wanted to ensure that this particular tower didn't impact on the amenity of that residential tower, and certainly all of the reports and engineering reports that have been done there have ensured that there is little or no impact to that adjoining residential tower. The key benefits from this building is that it is a five-star, green star rating. There's a forty-four per cent reduction in carbon emissions from the building, which is equivalent to thirty-seven hundred cars removed from the road annually. The reuse of the structure has saved a very significant amount of potential carbon usage just by reusing the existing structure of the building, and the building has achieved a number of other significant environmental standards. The reason that the Development Services team approved this particular development was that it delivered something that was reflective of our subtropical climate. It was a great reuse of the existing building, the architectural outcomes are first class, and the building itself obviously provides for a level of commercial accommodation in the city, which will be sought by those in need of A-class commercial premises. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
No, thank you, councillor Allen. Any other debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, just briefly on ida mai. I'm still a little bit confused about what this actually is. It doesn't strike me that this is an approval that's been undertaken by the committee. There's no DA number listed in here. There's no detail about whether or not the committee and/or this council is approving anything. I suspect it might be a minor change. In paragraph three... Sorry, in paragraph two, it talks about the height of the building increasing from twenty-one storeys to twenty-four storeys. But all in all, I'm a little bit confused about why this has come up to council. There's all these controversial DAs in the city where we're having material change of use outcomes radically impacting on residential communities, for example, and those aren't worthy of a mention in this councilful debate. But as far as I know, this is not an approval for a DA. We're just getting a briefing on a building that's already approved, and that's as far as it goes. I guess here's a few questions for the chair. Can you tell us, is this building going to be solar-powered? Are there solar panels on the roof? Two, is this builder going to harvest and reuse or articulate rainwater and stormwater to contribute to water efficiency in the building? Is there any onsite composting or any other waste management going on? I note that there's a whole... Several paragraphs, I think, about how wonderfully five-star green-rated it is, but I'd like to know whether any of these practical measures are included in the design. And I'd also like to know is, is this a minor change? Is this just an update? Is this approval of a DA? Because it's very unclear on the papers before us.
Any other debate? Councillor Allen, write a reply.
Thank you, Mister Chair. In response to councillor Johnston's questions, the... It's not unusual for the committee to have a presentation on a DA that's been approved, as is the case with this one. We definitely bring to the chamber committee president... Well, to the committee, DAs that are, you know, unique in nature. This one in particular was unique because of the adaptive reuse. A couple of weeks ago, I think, we had the Rivergate Marina approval come to committee in the chamber. Once again, an interesting tourism and tourism-related approval. The other...
The other points you made, I'm happy to take those on notice and get back to you, but it is an approval, the DA's been approved, I can give you the DA number if you want that. The application itself was really just a material change of use application. And as I said, I'll leave it at that.
I now put the committee report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, acting chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday 24th, May, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 24th of May, 2022, be adopted. councillor Davis.
Thank you, acting chair. Tuesday's committee presentation was on the Brisbane Carbon Challenge and the work that has been undertaken with our champion households. The Brisbane Carbon Challenge was initiated to encourage and support Brisbane residents to reduce their emissions. And council and Brisbane Sustainability Agency worked with 18 champion households over 12 months to reduce their carbon emissions by 50%. In question time today, I spoke about the Green Heart Fair and how it was wonderful to have the opportunity to meet a number of the champion households who participated in the challenge and present completion certificates to them. And it was fantastic to hear about the actions that they are now undertaking and how they found the challenge to be very rewarding on so many different levels. Mr Chair, I'm delighted to report that over the year, that the average reduction in household emissions was 55%, which was a wonderful result and more than our original target of 50%. The key outcome was that all households became significantly more conscious about their impact on the environment and how they could reduce that impact. As part of the Carbon Challenge, Brisbane Sustainability Agency also launched a carbon calculator. And the calculator enables all members of the public to calculate their household carbon emissions and receive general advice on the actions that can be taken to reduce their emissions and also to save bills. A feature of the online calculator is the ability for residents to log back in at any time, to retake the calculator and to measure progress in reducing emissions. And I look forward to hearing more of the things that come out of the Carbon Challenge and how the programme can encourage even more Brisbane residents to reduce their household emissions. Every small action really does make a difference. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Davis. Any debate? councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on item A. It would come as no surprise to anyone in this place that I am excited to talk about the Brisbane Carbon Challenge. This is an important element of the Shrinna Council commitment to pollution minimisation and carbon reduction. For the record, I'm going to remind the chamber about why this Carbon Challenge is so important. Brisbane City Council is carbon neutral and we continue to advocate for carbon minimisation through different programmes. As you would know, acting chair, Brisbane City Council became carbon neutral in 2017. I remember Lord Mayor Newman being passionate about carbon reduction, I remember Lord Mayor Quirk being proud of attaining the distinction of becoming carbon neutral. And I know how proud Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna is of continuing this and keeping us as the gold standard in the country. Brisbane City Council is, of course, Australia's largest carbon-neutral government organisation and it is critical to note that your council is the only certified organisation in the entire country with an operating landfill and a large public transport service. And that is important because Brisbane City Council is Australia's largest local government authority in terms of both population and budget. We know that council achieved carbon-neutral certification against the Climate Active Carbon Neutral Standard for Organisations in February 2018. That's when the paperwork was done, but the work started many years before that because we're getting it done. We're not waving banners, we're not gluing ourselves to the road, we're getting it done. And the Carbon Challenge is another piece of the carbon reduction jigsaw puzzle. And let's talk about how this is getting done. Because activities such as the Carbon Challenge demonstrates council's leadership in energy and carbon management in Australia. The Shrinna Council will continue to deliver cost-effective carbon reductions across business operations and encourage a reduction in the emissions from households. Not only will we work towards maintaining our carbon-neutral commitment, the Shrinna Council is working towards reducing our community emissions. Our consumption and emissions start from the little things and stretch to world-class game-changing initiatives. The Brisbane Carbon Challenge involved highlighting some champion households and attempting to reduce their carbon emissions. Just as council has upgraded 25,000 old-fashioned light bulbs into low-energy LED lights, some of the Carbon Challenge homes also replaced old-fashioned globes and replaced them with efficient lighting. 78% of the Shrinna Council vehicles are low emission. We've heard at great length, one of the Shrinna Council's greatest initiatives, the Metro, will have vehicles that are 100% electric. That means 100% zero tailpipe emissions, that means cleaner air, less pollution, better livability. While it was unlikely to expect any of the households participating in the Carbon Challenge to upgrade their vehicles to electric or low emission, we did see residents taking fewer rideshare trips, driving less, bussing more and cycling when they could. And it's initiatives like that that have put Brisbane on the list as the 10th most livable city in the world. I'm sure you know that this council has installed 2,200 kilowatts of solar panels on council assets. That includes libraries, facilities and bus depots. Again, while households participating in the challenge wouldn't have been expected to install solar panels, many opted to switch to the use of clean, green, renewable energy. Further, we're reducing our emissions by reducing green waste going into landfill. In fact, this council has reduced such landfill by 40%, which helps reduce emissions. We're also diverting organic waste.
Councillor Cumming, please stop interrupting.
Just sounds like a mosquito. We're also diverting organic waste with composting hubs at 23 locations across the city, including St Lucia. Don't forget the Food Waste Recycling Pilot Programme too, because the households participating in the Brisbane Carbon Challenge also rose to the challenge of food waste reduction and reduced their carbon emissions by not sending food to food waste to landfill. I'm sure you know, acting chair, that Sherwood Bus Depot in Tennyson was awarded five green star ratings for the environmentally friendly sustainable design.
Please continue councillor Mackay.
I'm so thrilled to be able to be corrected all the time, it's great. Elements include, I shouldn't use sarcasm, it doesn't read well in Hansa, does it? I don't appreciate the snide comments, is what I should say. Elements including solar panels, rainwater storage, stormwater harvesting and bio-retention basins were installed to achieve five-star green ratings. Some of the champion households in the Carbon Challenge used energy monitors to try to reduce their energy on a domestic scale the way council does on an industrial scale. Chair, acting chair, we cannot, of course, realistically make our emissions a flat zero in the near future. I suggest that as long as we have landfills and without significant changes to the scientific processes, this would not be possible. And that is why other action is required. That is why the Shrinna Council rolls out different programmes, including the Brisbane Carbon Challenge, to help reduce emissions across the city. If memory serves me correctly, the average Brisbane household emits about 12 tonnes of carbon every year and the Carbon Challenge aims to reduce that to six tonnes per household per year. Residents of Brisbane should be proud of the Shrinna Council's effort and its direct action on carbon emissions. Maybe everyone else can try to catch up.
Further debate? councillor Johnston.
Yes, just through you, Mr Deputy Chair, just a quick question. I note that there are 18 households that participated in this glorious programme that we're discussing here today. Eighteen, eighteen, so, you know, I think there's sort of 800,000 households in Brisbane, so I'm glad there were 18. Well, I think clearly somebody, councillor Mackay knows, but that's great. I'm glad he knows because he's obviously got some sort of information that the rest of us don't have. So I, through you, Mr Deputy Chair, just like to know which suburbs have the 18 participants in this programme? I'd just like to know what the suburbs are, please. And if there's more than one per suburb, then that would also be useful to know. Thank you.
Further debate?
Thank you, acting chair. And I don't have that information here with me, but I'm happy to get that information for you councillor Johnston. What I would say is that this was quite an intensive programme, we're officers working very, very closely with the champion households to assist them through the programme. We called for nominations for people to participate in the programme and what the team looked for were different types of households, so families, young families, renters, sharehouse residents. So it was trying to get a range of different people to participate. So it wasn't based on where they lived, it was the type of household in which they lived. So to suggest for one moment that somehow these were predetermined locations for households to participate is frankly offensive, it is untrue. But I will, councillor Johnston, as you request, to provide those suburbs for you.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
The chair's given her report, so councillor Johnston, your claim.
Yes, thank you. At no time did I imply that somehow there'd been some wrongdoing or misrepresentation here. I asked for a list of the suburbs and I appreciate that councillor Davis will supply that.
I now put the committee report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. councillor Toomey, City Standards Committee.
Thank you, deputy chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee held Tuesday, the 24th of May, 2022, be adopted.
Second it.
Moved by councillor Toomey, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 24th, May, 2022, be adopted. councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Before I move into last week's committee report, I did attend the Brisbane Pool, Spa and Lifestyle Expo where we actually had Built Environment, I had a stall there and officers were maintaining that stall during that expo. I particularly want to give a shout out to Andrew and Natalie, who were the officers that I joined on Sunday. They took me through a wide range of compliance issues around pool fencing, gates and the like. It was interesting to know, there was a lot of things that I didn't actually know about pool fencing and I'm quite sure that there'd be a lot of residents in Brisbane that don't know about pool fencing as well. And what pleased me to no end was both Natalie and Andrew were all over their stuff, they just knew it end to end. I really want to thank them for the work that Natalie, Andrew and the other officers did over the weekend at their pool and spa expo. They fielded some 120 enquiries, Mr Deputy Chair. A lot of them, from what I gathered, were around spas and whether fencing was required for a spa. All of this information is quite critical to our residents when it comes to keeping young children safe around open bodies of water. And I really wanted to pass my appreciation on to Andrew, Natalie and the rest of the officers that maintained the stall over the weekend. We had a couple of questions in today's committee, Mr Deputy Chair from councillor Cumming, and I'm quite happy to provide answers here in the report. Councillor Cumming asked which schools and childcare's within his area are part of the Lord Mayor's Environment to Leadership Network and that is Iona College, councillor Cumming, and also Wyndham State High School. He also asked a question around the Waste Smart Kindies and I'm pleased to say that children at the Bay Terrace are part of that scheme. We also learnt today in the committee report that councillor Johnson has a very, very good kindie in her area that's also worth noting, that's doing really, really good stuff. For other councillors who want to know, the schools and kindies that are participating, sorry, forgive me, the schools and kindies that are participating in the programme, that information is available on council's website. Mr Chair, last year's committee presentation was on asbestos and Paula, our Compliance and Regulatory Services presenter, gave us information that council has attended, or investigated, I should say, over 1,800 investigations since 2015 and 16 relating to asbestos. Some 890 were followed through by our compliance team and then obviously there was a number that were issued monetary pins. The information presented by Paula, I got the impression from the committee, was quite good and there were plenty of questions being fielded from the committee towards the presenter. With that, I'll leave the rest of debate to the chamber. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
Is there any debate? No debate? I'll put the committee report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of May, 2022, be adopted.
Second it.
Moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 24th of May, 2022, be adopted. councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. And just before moving to the report, as usual, I want to update the chamber on all of the fantastic things that have been happening around Brisbane in the last week. We've talked about the Green Heart Fair and it truly was magnificent in your ward, Mr Deputy Chair. I took great delight in taking my granddaughter along and she had a fantastic time and I know that there were a lot of families there, as councillor Davis said, but I really want to say a big thank you to all of those involved in making it such a fantastic event. And of course, the weather was magnificent and it was equally magnificent the day before when we had the Tenerife Festival. Again, this is one of the best suburban festivals in Brisbane and I know I'm slightly biased, but it was just fantastic to see so many people there. This year, we had a street dedicated to the children's area and we had the New Farm State School children performing a number of times during the day and it was really fantastic, again, to see all of the families coming along to that wonderful Tenerife Festival. And of course, for the nighttime economy, and I know that councillor Cumming is always interested in knowing what's happening at the nighttime economy, the nighttime economy at the Tenerife Festival was stupendous. Wonderful acts, lots of people who were coming into the festival and really enjoying that early evening at the Tenerife Festival. Also, last week, I attended on behalf of the Lord Mayor, the Big Reach, which was a mental health workshop where there was discussion around how creative activities can support those with mental health issues. And again, really want to thank the organisers for taking the time to involve so many of our local artists and our local organisations to come together so that they could talk about some of the latest things that are happening within that particular sector. I also want to give a big shout out to Ben Bajanson for Light Up the Night. It was a charity gala, it's for a fight against LGBTIQ domestic violence. And it was the first time that this has been held, the lady mayoress and the lord mayor were there supporting Ben and his team. We had Dame Quentin Bryce. It was, again, a wonderful inaugural event and it was something that I think that all of those who were there could really enjoyed. And for such a good cause and to hear Dame Quentin talk about the great steps forward that have been taken in all forms of domestic violence, but the LGBTQI community particularly has faced some of those in the past. And so really want to thank Ben and his team for taking that big step of having their very first gala and really congratulate them on Light Up the Night. Moving to the committee, we had a committee presentation on children's early literacy and reading programmes update. And it was wonderful to hear about the many, many programmes that we have from babies all the way through toddler time, story time. We talked about some of our Indigenous programmes and it really was a special presentation. And I'd just like to, I think it's important that the chamber knows that one of the questions that was asked was that was asked was what was our earliest memory of a book? So I'd like to share with you that councillor Toomey's was Biggles, that councillor Griffiths was Storm Boy, councillor Cummings Billy Bunting and then the famous five was the overall winner with councillor Landers, councillor Mackay and myself having those strong memories.
Sorry, point of order is Billy Bunter.
Billy Bunter, sorry. I will take that interjection and please make sure it's Clark's that we get the right name in the thing. It was a really great presentation. I really want to let the chamber know that our committee really does sort of look at some of the wonderful things that council does right across Brisbane and our libraries, I think, are just so special and to have that contribution from all of our committee members that day was really extra special and I'll leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Howard. Any debate?
Yep.
Councillor Howard.
Thank you deputy chair. Our ayes to speak on item eight also, children's early literacy and reading programmes. As a young mum, I cannot thank council enough for the lengths they go to to support our youngest residents. As councillor Howard mentioned, some of these programmes include First Five Forever, Little Stars Reading Programme and the Mobile Library which visits our local events. These events are not only a tonne of fun, a great social adding for parents and bubs, but also have a lasting impact for our children. A few years ago, I visited a book tour by Mem Fox. Many of us know her as the author of Possum Magic or Where is the Green Sheet? However, I went and listened to her speak about her book for parents, Reading Magic. She spoke about a number of lifelong benefits about reading out loud to children has, but a few points that stuck with me are bonding, brain development and the benefits of reading for their future. She spoke about the importance of getting down on the ground and laughing with your child, playing with them, reading with them, showing them how much you love them. I remember her saying, who cares if they rip the pages? That's what they're for, just tape it up or get them a cardboard book. She also spoke about children's brains development and expressed how important the first five years of your child's life is and the most important for their brain development. Our brains are a massive muscle full of motor neurons and by reading aloud to them, it helps children's brain to build and form these neuron connections. On the First Five Forever website, it says, in the first five years of your child's life, their brain forms over a million new connections every second. It's incredible. Research shows the first five years last a lifetime and that simple everyday activity of reading with our child makes these connections strong. And Mem's last point that I remember speaking about a lot was reading out aloud. As a result of hearing different words, they will have learnt so many different words themselves and how to use them. I know we all have those moments as parents when our children start to say big words. Recently, my Georgia four-year-old said, that's extraordinary mum and it melted my heart and gave me a little giggle. But there are so many statistics and case studies from a number of Australian universities showing how important it is to develop our child's brain. Some of the cool ones I learnt today was if your child cannot rhyme by the time they are four, they're going to find it really hard to read later in life. The other one was if a child can recite six rhymes by the time they're four, they always are at the top of their reading group by the time they're eight. So reading and singing to our children have lifelong benefits and I cannot thank council enough for their efforts in giving our youngest residents the best possible start with their amazing programmes. Thank you.
Further debate? Councillor Howard? I'll now put the committee report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thank you mister deputy chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 24th of May 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Huang, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday 24th of May 2022 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks mister deputy chair. Our committee presentation last week was on the Commitment to Council Programme. This is a human resources initiative which recognises the service and dedication of our council staff. As councillors would know from their interactions, we are blessed to have so many staff who dedicate their professional careers to the service of the people of Brisbane and I'd like to take this opportunity to once again acknowledge and thank them. Long-term staff retention is important to council and we want to recognise those long-serving staff for their commitment. The Lord Mayor's Commitment to Council Programme acknowledges and celebrates the careers of employees who have dedicated 10 or more years to council. The programme recognises staff through celebratory events and recognition on internal comms channels as well. Staff who have worked at council for more than 35 years are also recognised at a special ceremony. Last year, we recognised 347 employees for 10 years of service, 276 employees for 15 years of service, 117 employees for 20 years of service, 75 employees for 25 years, 53 for 30 years and 75 employees for more than 35 years' worth of service to council. So we thank them and we thank them especially for their service to the people of Brisbane. Mister deputy chair, we also had our usual financial report for receivable rates, inventory, payables, provisions and moles for the period ended March 2022 and I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Any debate? No debate? I'll put the committee report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Petitions, councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor McLaughlin?
Thank you mister deputy chair. I have a petition that's been received requesting council implement traffic calming measures on Kent and Lodge Roads in Kalinga.
Thank you councillor Johnston.
Yes, I have a petition from residents of Chelma calling on council to rehabilitate and resurface Gordon Thompson Park.
Thank you. No other petitions? Councillor Landers, may I have a motion for receipt of the petitions?
Yes chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
Thank you, as made by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Strunk, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committees concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Owen?
Thank you mister deputy chair. I rise to speak tonight in regards to some local community events right across the city of Brisbane. Mister deputy chair, I'd like to make a reflection on the unveiling of the Indigenous Memorial to acknowledge those who have served and continue to serve in our Defence Forces. Friday was a very important event and as the Lord Mayor said, it was a once-in-a-lifetime event and it was held on sacred ground and it was made even more sacred by the unveiling of that memorial on Friday. One very important component of that gathering, and there were quite a number of people who were there, was that it was the largest gathering of current and former Indigenous serving officers of the Defence Services ever. And to bring them all together and to see them sharing their pride in their culture and their background, but also their pride in serving our nation was very, very significant. I also had the privilege of representing the Lord Mayor the following day at their first formal wreath laying service, which has been a long time in coming in the sense that there has been wreath laying in the past, but never before with a memorial in Anzac Square. So going forward, this will have even more significance for particularly those serving officers and whether they are current or former. And it was great to see that people had come from far and wide to be there for that unveiling. I'd also like to mention, mister deputy chair, the Korean Taekwondo Association of Queensland. On Saturday morning, they had their championships at Nissan Arena and to see many of these young people and the way that they are focused and disciplined on going through their different stages and their different belts for Taekwondo, there is a lot of commitment and these are very, very young children, many of them. And I was speaking to one young lady and she said, this is my first tournament championships and I'm really, really nervous, but she said, I'm really, really proud to be here. And to hear that sense of pride and that level of achievement was really great to know that those young people are really grasping the opportunity to take that next step. Mister deputy chair, I'd also like to acknowledge the 75 years of our UN peacekeepers from our Australian forces. On Saturday morning, I had the privilege as well of attending the wreath laying ceremony now. I haven't missed one since they've been held and since I was first elected and it was really interesting to see how it's evolving and I do acknowledge the presence of her excellency, the governor of Queensland, Dr Jeanette Young, at that ceremony as well because her presence made a major statement for all of the peacekeepers. It really, on the 75th year anniversary of them being formed, it really spoke volumes. It's interesting to see the support that is garnered at these peacekeeping ceremonies, wreath laying ceremonies because we have everybody from the Consular Corps to the Cypriot Patriot Societies, to the Rwandans who are holding up photos saying, we thank Australia for looking after us. And also to two of my constituents, two young ladies who sang the national anthem, who actually hold the world record for singing the most national anthems, 195 national anthems in 100 languages. They sang them all back-to-back in September 2021 and they are young ladies who live in Calumvale, who've grown up in my area and they originally came from Kerala in India. So they weren't content to just sing a national anthem and convert it to Malayalam or Hindi, they went through every single of the 195 anthems and learnt them in 100 languages. And their presence there because they have always been focused on promoting peace and that was their aim by learning all of those national anthems in all of those natural languages to promote the concept of peace across the world by bringing all of those anthems together. But can I say, to all of those who have served and continue to serve as peacekeepers right across the world, thank you for your service because your job is a difficult one and it is something that is ongoing and very vital. I'd also just like to make mention of the Australian Institute of Architects Brisbane Awards that were held on Saturday night and it was a pleasure to be able to present the Brisbane City Council sponsored award for the Buildings That Breathe to Fender Katsalitis and they are a Brisbane-based architecture firm and they were extremely proud and can I say that from the judging of that award, there were so many contenders, but this particular one really exemplified the criteria that we as a council endeavour to promote. So they've done a fantastic job and I say congratulations not only to them, but to all businesses that were nominated and to all of those who received commendation on the evening. This weekend and this week are going to see some significant milestones as well. On the 2nd of June, we will have the 10-year anniversary of the opening of Wisdom College in my area and this is a major milestone for this very young school and they are going ahead in leaps and bounds providing important opportunities for our local youth. On the 4th of June, we'll also see the celebration of the Eid Mala hosted by ISQ and also the Party in the Park with Belong. So they're regular events that in the past we've managed to celebrate and it's been a long time with all the Covid interruptions, but it's great to have these festivals back and happening again. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't focus on Sunday morning, the 5th of June, the Dragon Boat Festival, which I assisted the Hakka Association to establish and that will be held once again. It is a proud event that council sponsors and I know many councillors do attend that event. The Hakka Association, year on year on year, continues to work extremely hard to put on this wonderful event, to bring people in the community together, to celebrate the cultural diversity and also to promote an active and healthy lifestyle in our city. So there's certainly lots of events that are hitting the ground at the moment and it's wonderful to make sure that we can be out there to support them. Thank you mister deputy chair.
Thank you councillor Owen. Further general business, councillor Strunk?
Thank you deputy chair. I rise to speak about a number of events that happened over the weekend, but one who sort of, I was sad that councillor Howard's just left the chamber because I would have liked to have put my earliest memory or my favourite book, my earliest memory was The Little Engine That Could by Mattie Piper in kindie and I still remember, I still remember a lot of the words out of that, which is really interesting. But anyways, I just want to put that on record. Now, in regards to events, we had an opening of a new childcare and kindie called Happy Hearts on Saturday and I just want to compliment Hayley and her team, the manager and her team, who have opened up a centre that actually is really quite spectacular actually, in a suburban street behind Richland East State School. And it's just amazing what the state of these childcare centres are now and how inviting they are for the kids and for the parents. This particular centre has a good drop-off area within the precinct because it was a good-sized block and they made great use of the space, having a good drop-off area which is safe because again, it's in a suburban street that runs behind the Richland East State School. And it was an interesting background as well of the family, a family who built the childcare centre. This is their fifth, they have one up at Caboolture and a number of others around South East Queensland as well. And they only started doing this when they immigrated from South Africa in 2017. So they've really done a great job in establishing some wonderful centres right here in Brisbane and in other areas, in other jurisdictions as well. So I just want to compliment them on that. And of course, with the promise of more childcare money for families from the new Albanese government, we are certainly going to need more childcare centres to help those families who need to put their child in care while they go out to work to pay for their homes and living. We have the Vietnamese chapter again and I've raised, and I've talked about this, the chapter in regards to the fundraising they're doing. Well, they continue that on and this last Saturday, they were raising more money for the flood victims, Brisbane flood victims as well, not just Brisbane but Ipswich as well, flood victims and also the Ukrainian refugees as well. They've raised currently, and this didn't include this last Saturday, they had raised $51,000 for the flood victims and $26,000 for the Ukrainian refugees. So Senator Scarf and Milton Dick, the member for Oxley, were there in attendance as well and it was, again, it's something that they have been doing now, this is now the third fundraiser and they're preparing to do a fourth as well. So I just want to, Dr Bowie and the chapter is, does an amazing job in this area. Now, on Saturday as well, we had the Bangladeshis Association's Bengali New Year and it was supposed to take place up at the domain up in Ipswich, but unfortunately with all the rain that we've had over the last week or so, that wasn't able to be accommodated and they had to relocate within two days of the decision being made and get everything And they had to relocate within two days of the decision being made and get everything to another venue. Well, the Islamic College at Durack put their hand up and the Imam said, yep, we're up for it. And within two days, they had everything rearranged. And that would not have been an easy thing because this was a big, this was a big festival. They had multiple, multiple stalls out in the comments area, plus of course, all the entertainment inside in the auditorium. I, I just want to compliment, of course, Dr. JD, who is there, he was the, he was the emcee actually on, on the night. But he, he's one of the spokespeople for the association. They do, they do terrific work on, on a number of other programmes as well. But this was something they just could not put off because COVID, of course, had disrupted their, their festivals or their, their New Years in the past. And they weren't going to let some rain this time disrupted any, any longer. So they found the new venue within two days and moved everything over there and in. And it was just quite amazing that they were able to do that. Fantastic food, pop-up stalls, as I said, and, and a lot of dancing. And it was really a great night, enjoyed by everyone. And of course, as councillor Owen said, the dragon boats are this Sunday, the fifth. And we're, council officers are preparing the site. Now, we, we, we had, we had a lot of rain, of course, which disrupted some of the harvesting of some of the, some of the weeds, whether it be the sabinia or the cutting of the existing plant life that sort of grows up to the surface that has to be trimmed down to around about eighteen inches or about four fifty mil every so often as it, as it grows up. So to make up for the fact that we didn't, we weren't able to get in there as quickly and as long as we possibly could, we've got two harvesters in at the moment. We got a medium size, we got the small one. The small one's doing the sabinia and the medium size is doing the, the, the plant, the plant material that sort of grows to the surface. Like, I don't want to call it weed because I don't think it's a weed. It's really just the plant life that grows up that needs to absorb the nutrients and the like. But all that's happening and the, as I say, the site's being prepared with the litter clean-up as well. So it should be a really, providing we have good weather and it looks like Bombers are predicting that we should have a really good day there on Sunday with many, many thousands of people that, that attend that event. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Strunk. Further general business, councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Mister Acting Chair. I rise briefly to speak about the Lenham Fair, which is happening this Saturday at Lenham Park. It's traditionally called the Lenham May Fair, but unfortunately, everyone would appreciate why we dropped the May because it was a little damp on that day. It'd be, I have to acknowledge in a North Rotary because without in a North Rotary, this fair would not happen. They do get the council festival funding and also it's topped up by the Marchant Ward Office to have, to give the residents of the Marchant Ward, Inogra Ward and McDowell Ward a free family fun day. So what can you expect this Saturday? Well, you'll be disappointed that the Little Movers, one of our local dance schools, have cancelled due to all the Little Movers having a birthday celebration. And they've gone off to celebrate the Little Movers' birthday. But we do have the Franciscans on the Hill Rock Band. That is Padua and Mount Alvernia Rock Band. These kids are so talented. They're equal to the paid performers that we have on the day. It gives these children, or young adults, I should say, the opportunity to actually perform in, you know, a professional environment in front of large crowds. All the food around the event is all done by our local community group. Because the reason why we hold this event is to build our communities and build them, we do. It's lovely to walk around and see everyone going, you know, what street do you live in? Oh, nice to see you, I haven't seen you for a while. Comment on someone's dog. All the community groups just getting together and raising money for their different organisations. So what is free? The rock climbing wall, the pony rides, their petting zoo, the face painting, the jumping castle, and of course, the professional entertainment on the stage. Again, I would like to thank my staff, Elizabeth, who looks after that in the Marchant Ward Office, and the one that councillor Wines just stole from me, Monica. Thank you for all your hard work too, Monica, because you really started it off before you were poached by councillor Wines. Not that I'm a little bit upset by that at all, but I will catch up with Monica again on Monday. So please feel free to come down to see the professional entertainment, have your face painted or just a little bit of glitter put on your face, do the rock climbing wall and eat a snag or two. Lenham Park, Grange. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hammond. Further general business, councillor Toomey?
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I, I rise to speak about Gresham Street Bridge. Deputy Chair, we've heard a little bit from the Lord Mayor and councillor Wines today about Gresham Street Bridge. But just to put a bit of background behind this bridge, this was, as far as we know, Brisbane's last timber bridge that serviced vehicle traffic. The bridge also carried a gas main and a water main into St John's Wood. Now, to put that into context, with the recent events that happened in February, should the old bridge have been in place, it would have been almost two metres underwater. Two metres, that's, that's a little bit taller than me. The bridge itself, the old bridge is protecting a sewer main and we've had commitment from UU that they will be upgrading that sewer main and armouring that sewer main in its current position. Because it's gravity-fed, the location of the sewer main can't be changed. But to say that this has been a long project, it has. This project technically started two years ago with the removal of the gas main off Gresham Street Bridge and then dug underneath Inogra Creek. Then we took the water main off the bridge and we also put that underneath Inogra Creek. Now, the wonderful thing about putting a gas main under a creek and a water main under a creek is that they can no longer be broken by tree strikes or that kind of event. So that secures the services going into St John's Wood for gas and water. Another part of the project, Mister Deputy Chair, was relocating the thirty-three kilovolt power line that goes through from Waterworks Road into, into the woods. And that was primarily initially done for the removal of the old bridge. As the chamber would probably appreciate, cranes, swinging cranes with large arms and power lines really don't mix. So the, the whole power line was moved away from the demolition area for the bridge. This has actually had the added benefit of creating more space to re-vegetate on either side of the bridge. So once the, once the landscaping works kick off, we're going to have a beautiful landscaped area on either side of the new bridge. The other thing that was done as part of this project, Mister Deputy Chair, was we actually lifted the bridge. So the decking of the bridge is now one and a half metres above the old decking. Now, this has a couple of advantages. It increases the flood immunity for the bridge. So people of St John's Wood and also Bennett's Road can get out in an event because Bennett's Road crossing generally goes under well before Gresham Street Bridge does. They can access and get out in an event. The other thing is, is there is some localised flooding that we generally see through Royal Parade. And by widening the creek underneath Gresham Street Bridge, we're allowing that water from Royal Parade to escape away a lot more quickly because we're actually lifting the height that the pipe aggresses into the creek. So that's another advantage. Another great part of this project, Mister Deputy Chair, and one that I am really very proud of, and as councillor Wines said, Graham Nell is retiring. Graham does need to take credit for this. This was something that he did on very short notice and that was to enable the redesign of the bridge for buses to turn left off Waterworks Road to access the terminus in St John's Wood. Now, the terminus, Mister Deputy Chair, has capacity for three buses. But there are only, there is only one bus service that actually services St John's Wood and that's the three seven nine. But this allows the terminus to be used for buses that would service west of St John's Wood, so through to the gap and in some cases, Capera and, what's the shopping centre out your way, councillor Wines? Brookside, thank you, to service that area as well. So this is a fantastic outcome for, for my community and also councillor Wines's community, which connects it back into the Gap Village. The bridge itself is concrete and steel. When you look at it, it's going to take a nuclear strike to get rid of it now because she's a solid bridge, she's not going anywhere. And in the recent flood events, it proved hands down that the piers, there's only two piers in the creek now, there was, was a four or five previously councillor Wines, was four, wasn't it? It was quite a number. And one of those piers, Mister Deputy Chair, was timber. So there was a composite between concrete piers and timber piers going into this creek. And putting it into context, this bridge was taking rubbish trucks and buses and it held up for ninety years with a, with a timber pier. So it did really well for the, for the life cycle of the bridge, it did fantastic. But it's, it's going to be a bridge that's going to service the St John's Wood area for a very, very long time to come. I want to thank the Lord Mayor for bringing the construction of the bridge forward. I want to thank Graham Nell for the work that he did in the design of the bridge and enabling us to have left turns and right turns from Waterworks Road with buses onto the bridge. I also want to thank Graham, and this is one thing that I didn't mention councillor Wines, was the reinforcing of the pedestrian edges. So if we do need to widen the bridge, we've got extra capacity there to do that. The bridge has got improved pedestrian access. We have three childcare's in the area, two schools and a small business district. So it's highly, highly, what's the word I'm looking for? Activated area. So it's, it's a fantastic outcome. But one thing I do, I really want to acknowledge the actual project manager. So I know the Lord Mayor sort of threw the project manager job at me, but no, I'd really like to acknowledge the work that, that Nab did on this project. He's been with the project for the full two years, from beginning to, to end. And during that time, he did, he did bring on a second child. So when you think about, about the work that Nab's done, he's built a bridge and had a baby all in the last two years and he survived. I should really get him the T-shirt. He's done a fantastic job and I want to thank him for his interaction with the community because the community were well aware of what's going on, the communications that came out about the project, the timeframes and everything was just absolutely outstanding. And Nab's discussions with me about the progress of the bridge as well, I really want to compliment Nab on the work he has done and I wish him well on his next project and hopefully it'll be in the Gap Ward. Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor Toomey. Further general business, councillor McGoughlin?
Thank you very much, Mister Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on matters relating to National Reconciliation Week and in particular, the Nunga Reconciliation Events, which are held in Kalinga Park every year. And unfortunately, not this year due to the damage to Kalinga Park during the recent flood events. For councillors, I know councillor Cassidy is well aware of the Nunga Reconciliation Group, we've been there together in the past. But for others who may, may not be aware of them, they're a volunteer organisation made up of dedicated community members from the whole North Brisbane area, committed to reconciliation with Indigenous peoples through developing friendships, cultural understanding and shared experiences, working with local elders, schools in particular, which is great to see as the schools have come to this event in increasing numbers over recent years, and the broader community to create opportunities for cultural learning and reconciliation. So a wonderful group. The secretary is Colleen Kelly, who I think a lot of people in this place would know. And the, the president is a wonderful lady by the name of Maura Bly. Unfortunately, the event didn't proceed this year in, in Reconciliation Week due to the, the park damage following the floods. Whilst there's been a clean-up of debris down in Kalinga Park, the ground is still like a sponge and access down to the area where the, the group have their special ceremonial place. It was too damaged, they said, and they decided not to proceed with the commemoration. But I, I wanted to draw to the attention of the councillors, an issue there when, when I went down to see the damage there caused by the flood. And a lot of people will understand that this was a significant flood event that cascaded down through Kedram Brook and caused a considerable amount of damage. That's nature at work. But when I was down there inspecting the damage, I was horrified to see a deliberate and malicious act of damage to the journey home sign there at the Nunga Reconciliation Place. And it's horrifying. You can, you see mindless graffiti occasionally on signs where people scroll bits and pieces all over the sign. But this was a deliberate and malicious act to scratch out on the sign, Sorry Day, National Sorry Day scratched out, the words Stolen Generation scratched out throughout the, the whole, on, on the plaque. And it was just a crying shame to see that councillor Howard talked earlier about in Reconciliation Week, the need to get hearts, minds and action together. And I would contend also, we need soul. That there are grubs like this out in the community who are prepared to undertake an act of deliberate and malicious damage to a sign like this is hurtful. And, and hurtful not just to me, but I'm sure to the whole community. I'm pleased to see, to say and to see that the sign has been replaced. It was done quick, smart when it was brought to the attention of the sign shop. So congratulations to Brisbane Sign Shop for quickly engineering the, the, the fix of the sign. So it's now in place. And it was in place in time for the conduct of the ceremony if the group have decided to proceed with it. But unfortunately, due to the conditions of the ground, they decided not to proceed. But how, how dreadful it is that there are people out there who are prepared to undertake this sort of deliberate malicious damage to a sign. But I'm pleased to see that we have a reconciliation plan. I know that we're on board with these actions. And these sorts of locations in Kalinga Park, recognizing what was the hurt that was committed during those times, the Stolen Generation times, are important for us all to recognize. And I'm pleased to, to say that we do work with groups like the Nunga Reconciliation Group to effect change in our community. Thank you, Mister Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor McGoughlin. Any further general business? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, just on a quick matter of general business related to the flood recovery effort in our parks, particularly our playgrounds. I want to put on the concern, on the record, my strongest possible concern about the failure of Brisbane City Council to properly clean up, remediate and to restore twelve playgrounds in Tennyson Ward. For some weeks now, we've been receiving updates as councillors from our parks officers about the status of our parks. There are eleven parks in Tennyson Ward that have been open and the playgrounds within those parks have been open, but no proper clean-up of the softball and the rubber matting has been undertaken. One of the twelve parks has had softball put in over the top of the existing flooded softball and it's been open the whole time since as well. The reason I'm concerned is there are two wastewater treatment plants in Tennyson Ward, one at Oxley and one at Fairfield. These wastewater treatment plants unfortunately get flooded. When the wastewater treatment plants flood, the sewerage spreads out all over Tennyson Ward. And unfortunately, it causes really significant problems in our parks. And as a result, there have been twelve contaminated playgrounds, many of which will have had sewerage-infested floodwaters through them. This council has not... This council has not properly cleaned up these parks. They have been open for weeks. I've been raising this issue with council officers for weeks and with councillor Marks and more recently since he took over councillor Toomey. I am extremely concerned because last week, in several of these parks, council went and put a veneer of really fine, I'd have to describe it as sawdust, over the top of the existed softfall areas of the 12 or 11 playgrounds that I'm talking about. This is absolutely unacceptable. Having gone through this before, I know that council had to dig out these areas. Bacteria breeds in the underfall areas. It's a moist, hot, it's a moist, hot environment. It's never properly dried out. We've had wet areas in these parks for months since the floods. They, I am extremely concerned that council has not properly remediated these 12 playgrounds. The only thing that has happened in them is they got hosed off. So this is what amounts to flood recovery in Tennyson Ward in children's playgrounds. They get pressure washed. Now, it is a matter of urgency that this council properly remediates our playgrounds so that children using them can do so and families can be assured that they are clean and safe. That's clearly not the case. Now, in, after 2011, very clearly we were told that they all had to be decompacted, dug out. New base had to go in, new softfall had to go down. None of that has happened in 2022. It's clear from councillor Toomey and from the council offices involved that they don't see any problem here. That there is a fact sheet, I was told today, there's a fact sheet on the state government's website and I should have a look at the fact sheet. I know what the fact sheet says. It says that you shouldn't play on wet flood-contaminated fields, sporting fields. Fair enough. I agree completely with that. But what council doesn't understand is these are not just wet flood-affected fields. These are really complex environment where bacteria breed. They are environments that have been impacted by sewerage and council has done nothing to properly remediate them. So I'm just saying now that this is on the public record. I will be advising all residents in my ward. I'll be giving them the Lord Mayor's email. And if he wants to tell all the parents in my ward that it's fine for children to go and play in shit-infested playgrounds, that will be his responsibility.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Any further general business? No? Okay. Councillors, we now move on to the adjourned motion moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Cook, that Brisbane City Council introduces a new rates category for residential owner occupiers, creating a new class of natural disaster-affected uninhabitable homes. And that rates are set at 25% of the amount usually levied under the resolution of rates and charges for a period of up to 12 months. Before we get any further, councillor Johnston and to the chamber, I've received legal advice just now in regards to the motion. And the advice from City Legal is that the urgency motion is not a valid motion. The reason for that being is that a decision cannot be made on the current motion to introduce a new rate category. This is because rates and charges can only be decided by resolution at the budget meeting under section 96 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010.
Okay, point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I would like to move an amendment to the current motion. And that is that Brisbane City Council considers a new rates category. So delete the word introduces and replace it with the word considers. And I'd need a seconder.
Seconder?
Seconder.
Councillor Cumming. I'll now read out the amendment as presented. So that Brisbane City Council, rather than introduces its considers, a new rates category for residential owner occupiers, creating a new class of natural disaster-affected uninhabitable homes. And that rates are set at 25% of the amount usually levied under the resolution of rates and charges for a period of 12 months.
Point of order, Mr Chair? Point of order, Deputy Chair?
Uh, sorry, point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Just a question on that, based on what your previous ruling was, that it can only be considered, debated, voted on during budget. Does that change the consideration that we can actually even debate that motion today?
I'll just get some advice. The legal advice is that we are able to consider such a motion, but obviously not introduce. So the motion as amended can proceed.
Thank you.
A point of order, Deputy Chair. I'm not sure, I'm not sure the motion is amended. I think we'd have to have an amendment debate on, on a resolution that's been deemed out of order. It's starting to get a little bit, gets starting to get a little bit silly when we're doing, and so we're going to have to have an amendment debate on a resolution that's been deemed out of order to bring it back into order after the conclusion of, of business. Could I, could I ask that the consideration be given to, to moving this to later, to a later meeting so that the resolution can be dealt with properly rather than attempting to bring it back into compliance once it's already been moved out of, once it's already been deemed out of order? So if you consider the order of progress, a resolution is proposed, it's deemed out of order. We now have to have an amendment debate on an out-of-order resolution.
Just give me one moment, councillor Wines.
Oh, I'll just move it again. You can see how much they don't want to debate it, right?
Can't move it again if business of the day is done.
Oh, aren't you people delightful?
Based on councillor Wines's question, I just need to adjourn the meeting for five minutes in order to get some further advice. Could I?
Mr Deputy Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting until you get further advice.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Seconder?
Seconding councillor Landers. All in favor of a shorter adjournment, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Carried. Thank you. Councillors, I've received further advice from City Legal in regards to the amendment that councillor Johnston has put forward. The advice is that pursuant to section 37.1e, the motion is subject to an existing legal impediment in its drafting and accordingly, I have no other option but to rule it out of order. There being no further business?
Yes, I've definitely got further general business.
Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. I move suspension of standing orders.
You have a point of order, councillor Johnston?
You said, is there any further business? I've definitely got further business.
Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move an urgency motion that Brisbane City Council considers a new rates category, providing provision for a new class of natural disaster-affected uninhabitable homes. And that rates are set at 25% of the amount usually levied under the resolution of rates and charges for a period of up to 12 months. And I'll flag, I need a seconder.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Move by councillor Johnston.
Point of order, Mr Chair?
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Under the meeting's local law, the end of general business is the end of the general business of the day. Therefore, I don't believe you can suspend standing orders if there are no standing orders because the meeting has concluded and you did announce that general business was completed.
I did. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. But also councillor Johnston, to your point, the body of your motion is still the same as the other and pursuant to the section, section 37.1e, it remains the same. Therefore, it is, I rule it out of order. That being the case, meeting closed.